On the order. The manager please.
We have the table of council present. Mayor Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Tucson.
Present.
Councilmember Simmons. Councilmember McLean.
Here.
Councilmember Kay.
Here.
The sixth president and one absent there is.
Seven members in this coming. All right, please rise as you're able for one of the side. I will attend before agenda approval.
Would move support.
I wanted to make a many. Move and support.
Okay, and then. Okay, so on my. Confer proposed business. Uh though it read incorrectly.
We are, we are agenda approval.
Oh, okay.
You wanna remove the minutes from the consent agenda? Is that what you want me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So who has the consent agenda? Remove that one with. The resolution for the minutes. We're gonna do that one separately. Two, two twenty four dash. Two, three, or three, okay. Uh, okay, any other? That though, pro forma suite.
I'd like to move, um, resolution. Zero three six. And zero three five. To the intended.
What? What? Zero two six and zero three five?
Yep.
Uh.
Twenty four, zero three six, eight, twenty four, zero three five.
Maybe you do separately.
Oh.
Um. Well.
You don't have, I mean.
Move the sort of.
I think over here for a quick.
Okay. Are we, how does this work? Now, when we.
Are you, is that a motion or are you putting those on the concept? Or do you want to first things first? Where?
Are you all okay with these?
I think the motions we have.
They're already on the agenda.
Yes.
How about we leave where they are?
It's gonna be quick. They'll be.
Do you want the minutes at the top of?
Yeah, let's put them at the top. And then if they're like the four. Um.
There you go, the resolution.
Yes, it would just, just the first one. Um, but right after. Um, okay, any, any other change?
No, I think you're fine. Talk around the clean.
Okay. Thank God, here, I wonder if we could move, uh, I didn't get an instant agenda off of it.
Okay, so B and D. Are both of your movement against an agenda and can we just put those at the top of nine?
There is no more consent agenda.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
All right, so councilwoman Tucson, you're gonna read each one of those individual. All right. All right, there's no more consent agenda, it's over. Okay, um, almost a favor of agenda submitted.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also, you know, he just wanted one order directly on the top of that, right? All right. We're now at our work session. Uh, it's line of students presentation. City manager, have you taken away and enroll?
Um, I'm just gonna introduce by.
All right, thank you. This is probably one of the greeter powerpoints I've ever assembled, so. And I even got a slide on, so. All right, so we've been saying for a minute we need to take a look at all of our facilities holistically. Um, so that's what this is, this is gonna be an overview as to sort of state of our facility. We have not suggested next steps. So the slide that says twenty twenty master plan guidance values is the wrong slide, that should have been a slide that was staying on with city facilities. Apologies for that. Um, but we have city business facilities and then we have. So the city business facilities are what we're gonna be discussing. So that is city hall, DPS, fire and police. The associated facilities with our facilities, those are senior center, park ridge, river pool. And I always forget why it's like naming the seven more, so I'm overdoing. So. See, our freight house, sorry, freight houses not really a core city facility. So just to explain the distinction between those, we're gonna. Throw over what sort of kick this off and twenty twenty two council set a goal for staff. To, uh, assess all existing buildings and to develop a maintenance schedule and a list of upgrades. Uh, we went through some staffing changes in twenty twenty two, myself being one of them. As well as our supervisor who now oversees our facilities and he's been working that year. Um, so this is something we started, we have a pretty comprehensive work at the HVAC, we know more or less some of the existing problems. But, uh, to really sit back and assess the building solistically. Um, that takes a lot of stop time. Stop time and it tends to be. Running from issue to issue and emergency. So, but this is what we've found so far. When it says city hall. All right, so city hall, city hall has some immediate needs that we. You don't need to be handled, so roof, there's been a roof leak on above the lower level conference room. That we've seen in Doris, there is a roof leak that we have not been able to find in the doors on the. Second story roof and there's another one above Reagan's office and is south, is southwest part of the building. Uh, the foundation has some wire issues, you can see some of those from outside with a lot of deteriorating water. These boulders, you can also very much see it from the side. On the HVAC, so this room is actually one of our newer. Heat pump, uh, controlled facilities, but. Uh, maybe where we actually had a leak to the steam, um. The steam radials in the third floor above this room which affected our use of this room for about a week. Uh, the air conditioner in the lower level conference room is also kaput. And we need a heating system that people is basically it's upgraded on the third floor, the fourth floor. As well as that lower level conference room. Security is laughing, not gonna go into much detail there. And we're also in need of a new asbestos survey, um, that's actually, uh, under contract and should be beginning shortly, but we anticipate there's gonna be some. Other things that are deficient but are serviceable for now, layout and office space, the. Building is not particularly accessible and it's not intuitive for people who are visiting and who need to. Get services here like the building department, finding department. Uh, the assessor. It's difficult because those are sort of interacts with more internal business units, there's not really a distinction between state or finance and HR department. And, uh, the clerk's office ultimately. Most of the clerks are down here, but they often have to go upstairs and. Everybody has their down here to pay. Uh, to someone's there. Uh, the electrical is also. Deeply challenging here. Moving on to the police department. Uh, they are having a lot of. Foundation and site drainage issues, uh, their lower level. There's a significant amount of water that's through and every time it rains. Uh, we're currently working with OHM to address some of the drainage issues, um. That are ultimately also concrete issues along with the fire department parking lot, uh, and the subretail mall issues. Uh, the plumbing is also kind of up on its last legs, there's a fair amount of galvanized that's. Pluded and cast iron that is beginning to split, so we're kind of chasing splits after splits after splits of the systems. Um, deficient but serviceable, their layout and space needs, they have a lot of. Really challenging to use spaces, some jail cells that were converted into storage rooms and a change counting room. Uh, the roof again needs repair, potentially replacement and the electrical is. Uh, deeply challenging. Fire department is the best of all of our buildings, uh, I was telling Ken, I felt the need to add some things to this list. Um, their, their two priority issues are really being addressed right now and that is the concrete parking lot, which is fairly broken up and uneven. And, uh, they have some federal specific breakers in their building that we are in the process of replacing. Uh, but overall their interior layout and internal finishes just need some updating, there's also some potential asbestos in. That we would like to get assessed and then addressed. And overall in the longer term. They need to probably be looking at their longer term space needs and their layout and general. DPS, we're all pretty familiar with, um. The DPS needs, uh, the main building, the roof issues. The fuel pump issues in the summer, the salt crime structural issues. Uh, division but serviceable that we do need to address within five years or the pole barn, uh. It was located where it shouldn't be. The office, which is really too small, the function, the size of staff we have there. And the truck court, which is physically too small to cover the trucks that we have. So what we are recommending as next steps is to fully assess, assess the extent of the issues. So I would recommend that we put together our P for facility condition assessment for the facility. Get a set of outside rise, somebody that isn't taking up quite as much stuff then with. An outside resource to do this assessment and. Uh, also do programming assessments for each building, so. How much space do we really need for offices, can this building actually physically hold offices? How much space do we need for? Customer service at the police department or, you know, staffing or locker area of the police department? How can we best utilize the space that we have or is the space that we have even suitable, is this something that we can expand? And then once we know how much we need and what we're working with. Then we can move on from that. So that's sort of the staff recommendations and I'm happy to accept any questions. I'd like to point out that photo was actually from the most breathing roof leak there, so you know, that was absurd amount of water. Coming into our second basement. Which is where the store a lot of our, which is another issue. That's what I think.
Madam Mayor, Director. Uh, when you talk about. Doing the full assessments. We imagine also. Prioritizing within that group, so I'm, I'm thinking for example about the. The roof that you just mentioned, um. Roofs readily better days, they are not like fine one, uh, and so yeah, I hope that we can find a way to. Prioritize that. To stabilize it while we're not going to wait for a full report to be done.
Right, so we actually have a book for a lot of the repairs that we need, um, the city hall roofs. But they all. Everybody we've had out is really recommending a full replacement, otherwise we're just chasing repair after repair after repair. Which. Matches the age of these roofs, you know, to do for a repair. But we can repair them to get through another year.
Full replacement. I'm not, I'm assuming you use a tower or. Whatever they grab or.
Uh, it's a P D.
Um, so did the quick question in terms of when talking about. The different RFPs, so for the facility and programming. Um, assessments or are these things that would have to be done by? Different groups, I'm just, um, just because. Different skill sets, I'm just trying to get a sense of. What that might look like and also. If there's a need to do. One before the other.
They can be done concurrently, um, they could in theory be done by one agency, so there are some larger. Uh, engineering and architectural services trends that have. Everything we need underneath one roof, perhaps other divisions, OHM is an example of that, architecture, engineering, just that and probably many, many other things. Um, but I would recommend that you go out to bid for this. Uh, political issues that were discussed. Other question?
When you say go out to bid for this particularly, I would say separate them or?
Oh, no, no, we can put that out as one RFP. Um, that wouldn't necessarily include separate firms, which is bid together, so it would, yes, there, there would likely be one of the contractors be a prime and the other one be a sub. You just have them declare. Their intentions and how they intend to relate and who's really in charge.
Has the city ever done this before?
The last time I have been able to find a facility condition assessment was done, it was in relation to the freight house in the late on or early times. If they know anything about the freight house, let me give it a sense. Further questions? Bye. How soon do you think an RFP would go out? I would really work to put together one as soon as possible.
But the process for that would be. Coming back here at the next meeting before it gets sent out or it's offered or you can put out the RFP.
We just want to ensure that we're all on the same page.
Is it possible to include those, those satellites as well? In the RFP or we may have bid on those as?
We could put them in the RFP as options. To it and get pricing on doing those. Our MOUs with each individual facility is different however, so. At the river pool, our MOU states that they are responsible for any and all capital. Anything, capital as well as operations. However, with the senior center, um. We're responsible for capital, they're responsible for operations and maintenance is kind of a. Interesting challenge sometimes and then park ridge, uh, we're responsible for capital as well as some items of maintenance and some items of operation.
So in terms of regarding the freight house, if we had those two things as optional.
Well, the freight house has seemed to be significant investment since that, you know, early on, yes, true. That financial assessment is bonk basically. This we checked it all.
Done it all, right? Oh, that's what I'm saying. Leaving that off, who are the, and never do without. Uh, I know there's been issues with senior center.
Yeah, it could help guide any sort of future capital expansion plans that they have. Okay, I think for perfect issue. Further questions or discussions?
I just look, that's why I'm kind of like, oh, all right. Oh, okay, thanks. I feel like some of the things will come up in front of others. It's like in job of D V S. Specifically to.
Well, that's actually a really good point, so DPS I would leave off of the facilities condition assessment because we're already kind of to the next step. So that's why we have the phase two in the package as well as the program proposal. So when I say phase two, I shouldn't have used that phrasing because there's an actual phase two in the proposal, so we're already on a next stage perhaps. Uh. But we're looking at the programming proposal and the indoor air quality.
DPS is a high priority to be the repairs that are gonna be done regardless of this, uh, assessment.
So I'm just looking at city hall, the police.
Police.
They actually have a fire station. Uh, those two others.
Senior center.
When. When the solar installations happened in Hollywood. The roof says before that happened.
So when fire department had their solar put in, the roof was done, I think a couple of years just prior to that. Uh, at park ridge, it is candidly burned off the side, at the senior center is candidly burned off the side. There is not one at the police station and a city hall is candidly burned off the side. They're not actually pawned. There were significant roof repairs done here at city hall, I want to say in. In sixteen? I don't know, Tom Rome. It was that one. Uh, but it wasn't a full roof, it was. Significant repair. Were there questions or comments or anything? Coming up with thoughts, that's my thing.
Adam Aaron, I know this will come up a little later perhaps, but might as well bring it up now. That's simply the, the funding, I'm interested in, perhaps this is directed up, the manager and the. And finance director, um, but I'm interested in our. Bonding capacity.
So we, we could do a construction bond on this, um, I'd have to do more in depth about what we can get with that, but from what they spoke to for the, um. For the purchase itself, it, we, we would be able to get significant funds for the, for the project, but I would need to just verify that with our. Our, uh, preferred ways, another gamble.
Andrew, perfectly correct, but I think we're planning, once we get a little bit of information from the firm to potentially do a work session.
Yes, correct, we, this is just a, an initial work session, the. Funding mechanisms and priorities such that will come at a later, uh, a later work session.
Any other questions or, um, or discussion?
Just gonna try and think, oh, sorry. I mean, I don't really have any questions, that is no, right, it's something that's very, very overdue, but I'm glad that we're, or. You know, with some of these things that have been. Delayed and had to get a ball, so picture of things.
Thank you, Director Westler.
One more thing, that financing or the funding work session will, will bring forward the, uh, bonding capacity and the different payoffs now in your yearly structure.
Thank you. All right, that one much faster than I thought. Um. All right, well, we are at the public comment. You'll have three minutes to address point. We'll start and see if anyone is bound up out there and if not, I'll go into the audience and then to zoom. Does anyone in the audience who would like to respond to all? Yeah, good. Anyone on Zoom?
If anyone on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand now, I have three minutes to address council. Also, no hands are raised.
You have one in our.
Uh, hi, council mayor, um, Kat making a word for your resident. Um, I apologize for being a little late, um. We're definitely fine, I guess, uh, I just wanna say I support. Um, the community benefits agreement to continue until further amendment or readout, you know, the community benefits ordinance happens. I know that the city is going to be designating a city parcel to, as a part. Excited to talk more about that and it relates with the human relations commission. For some designated areas potentially in the city, um, and also I want to support, um, unarmed emergency response. Team specifically care based safety, um, I do sit, I'm very advisory circle, it is not a governance role, but it is. Something I take a lot of pride in being able to participate in. Um, and I just. I apologize, I think that's really it, but I didn't, I don't think I'll be able to say the whole time, so I just wanted to get that out there and say. Thank you, all right, have a good night, thank you. Um, anyone else in the audience?
Being on closed audience. Uh, and we'll launch the presentation, although we have two proclamations and then a presentation for our audit. I don't know if they're here.
They are.
Oh, they are here, wonderful, okay, doesn't know me really slow. Okay, um, so first, um, a proclamation for social worker. Month, the social work month, twenty twenty four empowering social worker. And this was brought forth by myself and councilmember Kay. Whereas social work is a profession truly dedicated to helping people. Whereas the primary mission of social work is to enhance human well being and help meet the basic and complex needs of all people. Whereas social workers put a particular focus on helping people who are vulnerable, oppressed or living in poverty. Whereas social workers follow code of ethics that calls them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity, dignity and worth of all people. Whereas social workers meet people where they are and help people and communities reach their full potential. Whereas the social work profession for more than a century has worked to improve the society, the social workers playing a role in establishing minimum wage. Social security and Medicare and working to ensure equal rights for women, African Americans and people who are LGBTQIA two S. Whereas social workers work in all facets of our society, including schools, hospitals, community organizations, the military. Mental health centers, social service agencies, corporations and local, state and federal government. Whereas social workers are on the front lines in helping this nation solve pressing social ish, social problems, including an increased demand for mental health services. And opioid addiction crisis and economic inequality. Whereas social workers are in high demand with some states reporting shortages in social work staffing and the Bureau of Labor Statistics predicting social work will be one of the fastest growing professions in our nation during this decade. Whereas a public opinion survey for. Ipsos. Said social work has a public approval rating of more than eighty percent and more than half of Americans say social workers deserve higher pay. Whereas twenty twenty four social work month theme empowering social workers embodies the need for society to support social workers so they can continue to do. The life performing work they do and help address societal needs. Whereas social workers in turn empower people, communities, our nation, helping everyone achieve their full potential. Now therefore in recognition of the numerous contributions made by America's social workers. Anna Cole Brown, Mayor of City of Zalani proclaimed the month of March twenty twenty four. As National Social Work Month and call upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers. And the City of Zalani in celebration and support of the social work profession. Given under my hand and seal of the City of Zalani, March fifth, twenty twenty four. Uh, and of course, this was really important to me and I think, but I'm sorry, that's about him. Um. And, uh, councilmember Kay, I'll give a moment if she wants to say anything, but you know, as a social worker who, um, also works as a public servant, I. Early in my career, never saw how those two things would intersect, um. And then quickly realized how important it is to have this lens at the table when making decisions about our communities and the people that we serve. Um, and also carrying our, our code of ethics with me on all of the work that, that we do as a body, so I am honored to be a social worker who is also. Um, in the political space because that voice is so, and really important to, um, you know, we will make communities forward, we're moving people forward. So happy social work month, fellow social workers.
I'll just quickly, I just wanna say it was, I, I honor for me to bring this for being a social worker and working in the field that's meeting people where they are.
So happy social party month. Thank you. All right. And next, uh, another very important proclamation celebrating women's history month. So whereas every year March is designated Women's History Month, our presidential proclamation. The month is set aside to honor women's contributions in American history. Whereas American women of every race, class and ethnic background. Have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unreported ways. Whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural and social, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation. By constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas from Abigail Adams to Susan B. Anthony to Jonah Truth to Rosa Parks, the timeline of women's history milestones stretches back to the founding of the United States. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the voluntary labor force of the nation. Whereas American women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. Whereas American women of every race, class and ethnic background serve as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of self-creation and equal opportunity, but also. Whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of self-creation and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Nicole Brown, Mayor of the City of Salani, hereby proclaim March twenty twenty four as Women's History Month in the City of Salani, given under my hand and seal March fifth, twenty twenty four. And I just wanna share, this was brought forth by myself and House Member Sweet. Again, women make the world go around, and this is very important for us to celebrate Women's History Month.
No, thank you. Well, well spoken.
Thank you. Alright, lots of eating. Um next, we will move on to our presentation of the city.
Hello, my name is, uh, I'm the last guy, uh, fighter, and I work for Block Sheperd Hackett. We, you know, present you all the, uh, forty minutes. It's been your, he's going to pass and out some documents for you to follow along with my here. Once you get, you will find there's a piece of paper inside the bigger one, so the letter um in your public entity, so anything is admitted here has become the public document, but normally you can show this letter to not make it public, so it can be righted, this the letter from us. Let's give it due, we discuss to any challenges we had in the audit, or any disagreements with management, uh, any findings, but there was nothing, so the the where that one is a good example, but template, so you can see the original, this is unmodified. Uh so there is no issue with management, there was no finding, uh, there was no any others. The other document is the actual financial statement and the public, this is what we filed with the state that for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty three, and that define for September, and we that filed before the deadline. So there was no intent or anything, so. This is a hundred and eighty document pages, so I don't expect a lot of people to be very uh expert on it more than uh normal, but there is a few things that I wanted to point out to you on this document, so when you see it and if you're citizen and ask you about it, you can understand how to communicate that with them. If you go to the table's content with with that page, so within that hundred and eighty document, some of the information we will be the the two pages that we would tell you that we ordered it and we guaranteeing that there is no error in them. And there's some information did not other this, so that's what I'm gonna try to point out to you. Um there is multiple financial statements as well in here, so I'm gonna try to explain to you the differences between them, so you can understand uh the difference. First part, that is mostly a letter from your city administration, which is called the letter of transmittal. This is not other than, but I think that is one of the things that you probably should read the most, that's most of your citizens will look at this, because it doesn't have any numbers for the most part. It's a very basic English, described it then what accomplished and major projects that the city have had to go through in the past year or the years that underdogged, so. And it's also very good for you as a cap, if you wanna look back as a timer of what you have accomplished in last year and know what is the most recent changes. Then after that, we'll go back on the table of content. There will be uh pages thirteen to fifteen, that is our audit report, this is the public version of this letter, which basically say there is no findings. There also could be another letter, as we're aware, full management letter. We don't have one for this audit, but when you find it, that means there was a problem, but since we didn't issue that letter, there was no issue. Then after that, you will go from page seventeen to twenty six, and we've covered more in detail of each one of those, but uh just to give you a high level view. This is called the management discussion and the analysis. So this is would have kind of summary from some of the updates you get throughout the year, it talks about changes, what happened in the year, more from a discussion point. Uh we do a limited procedure on this, meaning we read it, we make sure it's not uh there's no obvious errors and it's not contradicting with the financials. Uh this is a really good part as well, if you wanna take a little bit deeper to understand what happened in your changes without being too savvy with accounting, so that's another option if you wanna read uh more on this. Then go into that part that's called basic financial statements, which have all these, the from pages here. Uh there's two pieces, you'll find the first part called the government wide financial statement, and then the second part called the fina- uh the fund financial statement. This is where it starts getting confusing on the government side, so the first one, the government wide, this is gonna look, this is full full accrual, which many people would connect it for profit. So most of your citizens will look at this and get taken too much on the details on the however, there's a couple of issues with that statement, or you, it is not gonna represent your operation as much as the fund statement. But most people read the government and stick with it. There was, there is a couple of rules changing in the council law uh that's been passed five years and it's continuing, there's some other standard coming up next year, making a lot of changes to this financials. Uh one of, for example, some of them was we would add leases to the financials, that mean if you had a lease with hundred year, you would have to take how much your liability over the hundred year. Uh another one, pension, so if you have pension liability, which all cities have and count, uh they would take the entire obligation to pay for the retirees until their expected mortality table or what is the schedule is, you would take this as a liability on that government wide statement, even though in real life, you never really pay for these directly like that. You will, you will either raise premiums on retirees, or there's so many different avenues, and it's not meant to be paid, it's a very, very long liability. So there is a trend on this, that we keep adding more of these liabilities, next year we're gonna be adding more on that compensated absence liabilities into this, so most of your citizens are gonna look at this one, because it's the first statement, and they will stop right there and will start adding eventually. One of them is gonna be why net position keep going down on that statement. Why do we not pay in our pension or we have a problem? Again, this is just mostly deceiving ones outside, but most of the people will stop at this one and not go forward, so I wanted to caution you on this one, this is a very broad view of everything that could be paid on your behalf if you shut down your government today, which is not a normal ideal scenario. The second one is the fund financial statement. Those are gonna be a little bit more detailed, uh but they have multiple pages, so they look a little bit area, I guess. Uh mostly, they would show the general fund and some of the three funds. And this is what we more would focus on from operation standpoint. So for your operation, if you're trying to learn more about what you can control or how much money do you have, uh you would wanna focus on the general fund uh column, and Cody will cover a little bit more on this. Uh and again, if you, it's also gonna have the three funds, so if you're wondering, but so the other funds, what we like to call them purposes specific funds, so you don't get money in them unless the voter voted or you got a grant, they are usually very, very specific, and the way you spend it is very, very specific, it's gonna be for their own, and that's it. Uh the general fund is more, this is if you wanna start a new initiative, anything new, or if you decided to bail one of the other funds out and on it. Then after that, will be the notes to the financial statement, and I think that's the big part, it's from page forty five to almost page eighty. Uh that's mostly gonna be focusing on accounting policy, and this really don't change a lot from year over year, it's mostly additional language, there will be some good tables in there about a little bit more specific on capital assets or debt. Uh but again, I don't expect you to be very expert on this, if you're starting to get questions that uh referred to with that counting theme, or we can discuss or we can help you explain them more, I'm not gonna avoid too detail on this one for today as much on the description. Uh after that, um I'm sorry, the the part about the financial statement and the quick notes, that is hundred percent audit, that is what we look at most of the times, that's what we do mostly. Then the next part is gonna be the required supplementary information, this is some additional tables that is required for attention, uh and those will also do limited procedures on them. Uh and then the combining and the other finance uh supplemental information, these would include a little bit more details on the other fund column, so remember when I talked about the fund uh statements, I said there will be the general funds, the street fund, and there's usually another column full of other funds. This is gonna be the smaller funds that they are not very large, uh they would be broken out a little bit more in detail in here. So if you're looking for something very specific, uh like a park or something, you wanna know more about this, that might be a separate fund, but you're gonna have to look more in the detail. Uh after that, will be the internal service fund, and this fund, the whole purpose for it is to do work for the other government, uh the other governmental funds, we have to show it separately. Uh but it's for for your organization, here it's mostly covering the motor tools uh with the maintenance of all your cars, uh and workarths fund. Uh so part of your self insurance there. After this, we have the statistical section, and that is very nice uh statistics about the city, some trends will be seen it. Uh now, this is not other than, but normally, we're, we don't issue our court on this, but we do read it and make sure that there is no any obvious errors or anything contradicted our work on the financial that came to our attention. But again, I think it had some very interesting numbers that Cody will go. So I'm gonna stop right there and ask first, you had any questions on the first one, after that, I'm gonna go a little bit more into numbers. Is that going good? Do you have any questions? I know there was a couple, I have a couple of new board members here, I just wanna make sure all good.
Any questions? House Member Kay?
Madam Mayor, um it's a question, I don't know if you're gonna come to this already, but on page thirty, uh under the general fund category, the fund balances, there are some there, items that are noted as committed, assigned, unassigned. Could you talk at all about, it's appropriate at this point to to talk a little bit about uh which of those are available for spending and which are not available for spending?
Yeah, so so another expendable is usually would be some balances from inventory and some things that you really can't spend. Uh restricted is gonna be anything that is restricted by an outside part. Uh something outside of your control, let's say a grant, a grant, or do you have to spend that money, and you will see most of it of under the measured street, which is restricted for road project. So you're not gonna be able to spend anything from restricted. Committed is something like uh you made a contract and you know you're gonna have to spend some money in under this contract, but you still didn't pay it out, so it's sitting with you as a cash, but this is committed. Uh a fine is something that fine internally by you, think we're gonna do this initiative and we're gonna work on this, uh and it could possibly change by you since you have control over it. Uh the unassigned, it can be whatever cash is available now. The actual, actual number for initiatives, this is would be like everything that is more like a, the the remaining balance that is free, but doesn't also mean that this full number is really truly yours, sometimes it be covering certain um long plans, you know, you have uh higher paid employees about to retire, so you might have to pay some of that stuff for and maybe you have to keep some reserve to hold some grants, most of your grants are reimbursements, you have upfront the money. So you're gonna have to keep some of that balance for cash flow management. But yes, it is, potentially if not spent yet, then you can do whatever you want, but.
Madam Mayor, quick follow up, so that when you you did, you've done this work with multiple cities presumably, um is there a, is there a benchmark, is there a standard that you see as uh the right level to have unassigned balance at the end of the year?
Uh so from, if you read your transmittal letter, I would actually say that the city or that historically that you recommended one tenth of your last year's expenditure, uh so based on on the letter, it was one point six million, uh about one point six million, so you would wanna at least eat that one point six million, uh which is again one tenth of your expenditure. Now, is there a standard number from all cities? No, every city has done it completely different, uh but I would say since COVID hit and COVID money came into all local government, we have been seeing the number grow significantly. Um so it is, this is seems normal, doesn't seem like a red flag, but if it got too small, you would have to be concerned, uh but no, there is no specific number, it's depending on how much you're confident in your budget, and if you it it essentially from an operational tie, if this money run out, you're just gonna have to do more levy on your citizens or some kind of attack, so do you feel like your citizen can afford it, cannot afford it, do you wanna build a reserve to absorb shots if there is any other ish, health issues or any emergency happen in the city? How much do you wanna absorb by the reserve, and if you can't absorb it, then you know you're gonna have to go to the citizens and they're gonna have to absorb it, but it's gonna be based on how every city feels that they're susceptible to these shocks. Uh and that's how they balance the reserves, if they're not very confident, they wanna keep higher reserve, so they can shock and absorb disease, because emergencies happen.
Madam Chair, um one more, so just maybe more of of comments, it it may make some sense for us going forward to think about the level at which we believe it would improve uh to keep, keep those reserves, right, rather than, rather than it just being the residual of what we didn't spend in any given year's budget, uh rather have a target level, I know that I've seen uh anywhere from four months to six months uh of funding, uh expenditure funding as a target number for a lot of, a lot of cities, um let's see some references to that being best practice, it's a high level. But it's, we should at least consciously talk about where we think that ought to be, so if you don't run into those problems, don't be going back to the the citizens for.
Yeah, you were, this should have an emergency fund, you can create within the general fund like a vision for emergency, and you would set a parameter to it, and you don't have to move all of it in one time. Most of what I have seen is that they allocate a percentage of the excess, they three percent of their excess every year, and they build that throughout the year, maybe they start at the top a million, and then they grow it over the years. Uh but you don't have to make a one large transfer, so you don't shock your financials either. Uh but definitely, it's a good thing to have a disaster recovery plan. Thank you.
Other questions before we move into the next quarter of the presentation? Alright, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Alright, um so I'm gonna discuss a few of the dangers that we're referencing in the M D N A, um just to kind of give you an idea of what might be causing those from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. Um so for the first item, we can flip to page twenty. Uh, so for the first item, we can flip to page twenty. Um, this is gonna show you your change in that position, uh, for the governmental activities. Um, so a few things that we kind of outlined here, so major changes, um, are that you'll see your current and other assets increasing, uh, some things that that's due to, for the most part is it's gonna be your net investment gains this year, well, last year there was net investment losses, uh, so that's kinda raising your investments. Um, as I already talked about, the pension asset liabilities, uh, O P A liability. Um, those are all gonna fluctuate, um, just based on, you know, what is going on with the retirement system. So not really in the control of the city. Um, for the capital assets, you'll see that it's decreasing and that is due to current year depreciation. So just over time using the assets and kind of going through their useful life of value. And then, uh, one last change in liabilities is the other long term amounts. Um, so you'll see that that is decreasing. So that's due to the city meeting their debt obligations for the year, paying down their debt. Um, as they, you know, have meeting those payments, not missing any payments. So you're gonna see a decrease as long as you're not adding new debt to that line. Um, if we move on to page twenty two, um, it's kind of a similar table, uh, but it's more looking at revenues and expenses. Uh, so kind of in the middle of that one, uh, you'll see general revenues, uh, investment earnings. Um, so kind of as I was referencing, you'll see this year, it's a positive number where last year was a negative number. Um, this is due to market performance on the investments, um, you know, markets were down and then they, they went up. So, you know, we expected to see that, that flip there. Um, another piece, um, if you've noticed total revenues is increasing, um, so along with investment earnings. There is also the ARPA funding that the city utilized during the year, around two billion dollars. Um, so that's additional revenues this year that would not have been recognized in prior years. Um, and then total expenses, um, increased by quite a bit, but once again, we're looking at pension expense is the major driver of those increases. Um, so just outside the control of the city, but it has to be presented on the financial statements. Um, on page twenty three, uh, it kind of goes into at the bottom more of what's going on with the general fund for the city, as the major fund for the city. Um, so you'll see that, you know, it's increasing, uh, changing fund balance was three point three million, uh, so there's an increase there. Uh, kind of the same way as the overall governmental activities, you're looking at investments earnings. Um, you're looking at opioid settlements, uh, recreational marijuana sales, shared revenue with the state. Um, and those heartful funds, uh, so that's kind of all feeding into that increase. And there wouldn't be a, as much of an increase in expenses because on that side, on the fund level, you do not recognize those pension expenses. So while the revenue is still going up, those increased expenses aren't recognized on the checkup fund. Um, so that's kind of a brief description of what's going on, causing some of those changes within the city, within the general fund. Um, and then I also wanted to point out a few items within that, uh, municipal tables uh, that we found are, are very helpful, um, you know, if your citizens have questions or, you know, if you have questions in the future, um, and you just wanna reference this. Um, so if we flip to page one forty seven. On page one forty seven, uh, this is the change in the general fund balance. Um, and it's for the prior ten years, um, so you can kind of see, you know, from two thousand fourteen all the way to twenty twenty three. What exactly the general fund is doing, um, and you'll notice that, uh, you know, it's trending, every year it's trending up. Um, so, and it also kind of presents a graph at the bottom, um, they can kind of show you that trend as well. Um, that's kind of just summarizing the information, uh, to go with the general fund. Uh, if we flip to page one forty nine. Uh, this is kind of similar, uh, it's changing fund balances for the governmental funds, um. But you'll see this is revenues expenditures, um, kind of tracks, you know, anything to do with that change in the fund balances there. Um, so you know, you can kind of do the same thing, um, for the past ten years. You can look and see, you know, what are expenses doing, what are revenues doing, what's the overall cause on fund balances. Uh, if we flip to page one fifty, um, this has, it's gonna kind of move away from the actual financial statements of the city, um, a little bit. It's, and it's gonna kind of duck, go into some more, uh, you know, this is gonna touch on your assessed and taxable values within the city, uh, similar to the other statements, uh, the last ten fiscal years. So you can get a sense of what's happening with your taxable value and your assessed value over that last ten years, uh, starting from the bottom and going to the top. Yeah, yeah, the property, that property value is increasing, um, so that's, that's good. The next one that we wanted to highlight was page one fifty two. Um, so this is kind of highlighting your principal property taxpayers. Um, but you'll see there it's comparing from ten years ago to the current year. And where, where exactly those top taxpayers were at, you know, just from that year to this year. Uh, so we find, you know, if you ever have any questions about, about who in the city is kind of paying those, those property taxes. Um, that's a good one to reference. And then we're gonna flip a few more pages and go to page one sixty. And then on this one, it is gonna kind of delve into the demographics of this city a little bit. Uh, so you'll see here that it's looking at population unemployment rates, uh, things like that. Uh, median age and everything, so, you know, same thing, last ten years, you can kind of track and see what's happening with the unemployment rate. You know, it's gone down from ten years ago. And you know, every year there's new financials, there'll be a new year added and they'll take away the, that ten year. Uh, and then on page one sixty one, uh, this lists out the principal employers in the city. Um, similar to like, it shows ten years ago and then it's gonna show ten year. Um, it shows the employees that are employed at these, um, institutions, uh, and the percent of the workforce. Uh, so if they were on the list, um, of the principal employers, uh, ten years ago, they would be listed there. If not, then they wouldn't have that information. So that's, you know, if, you know, we wanna see what's happening with the major employers within the city, that would be a good table to reference. And that's all we really had, uh, to highlight on the financial statements, uh, is there any questions?
I, I have no question, um, so, and maybe this is for you and Ray, I, I'm not sure, but I remember in the past we would get like projections, um, out about our fund balance and just like, I'd gaze around that, would that have anything from this?
No, that would come through the, uh, the budget, uh, John Case or.
Thank you. Uh, other questions in council?
This is just to clarify with that, one of the things I was thinking about is, for instance, as we think about, um, new units and things coming online, how that impacts our revenue, um. And so that would be something that would be captured in this feature projection kind of thing. New units, housing, for housing, well, yeah, in terms of like in populations increase.
This would be included in this audit, this was, uh, this will be your twenty two, twenty three. Um, and then once those properties come on, online, then we can have them assessed and then we can properly forecast. But at this time, we don't, I don't have that data, our pilots are gonna be, uh, that they, uh, we feel that we just passed, I believe in something like, um, a hundred, twenty thousand dollars a year. Um, so that would be projected here, but it will be in our projections moving forward.
Yeah, I understand, I just was like, same, I wanna say, yeah, yeah, so, I understand, thank you.
Madam Mayor, we want final comments, uh, it's, I think it's always important to, when we have audit presentations to say exactly what the, the audit is all about, because I think it's easy to, you know, as you go through these numbers and those helpful. Uh, but as we go through that, kind of lose sight of what this is, and the audit adds at its core is a statement that says whether or not the city's books accurately reflect the city's position. And what you've told us here tonight is that in fact, our books do reflect the city's position.
Correct, yeah, because our audit report did not mention any findings. It is, we, we can't say it's right, but we can say that it's no error.
Madam Mayor, so the, the last thing I wanna mention is, when you have a clean audit like this, that is always a testimony to the work that's done by Finance Director, uh, and to his team. Um, and so I wanna, I wanna publicly recognize him, uh, I know this is a as the audit works his way through, uh, it's a source of much, at least when I was a finance director, uh, it was source of much loss of sleep and, and concern and we wanted it to come out like this. And so the fact that we've got it here, uh, tonight is a testimony to Reagan and Steve.
I wanna go to that, that this was a third year audit for, uh, for the city. And usually that was some challenges and we asked maybe more question or challenge and I said it's a different way. Uh, but that he was fantastically responded to all our questions very quickly. We also part with this audit, we, we don't show in here for this, but there was a special audit specifically for the COVID money, uh, for this year, and that was also clean opinion. It, it would have a separate letters that was sent to the federal agency, it's just not part of this financials. But we also done a, a significant large audit and we looked at number of transactions specifically for the COVID money to make sure that you're compliant. And we reported directly to the federal agency saying that the money was spent in accordance with the requirement. And that was good.
Thank you. Thank you. No further questions for you? Any other questions, uh, for presentations? Um, any comments? Well, thank you all so much, also thank you, Ray and your team for your work, um, on this, that's always good to hear. Uh, and if there are no further questions, we'll thank you for your time. Alright, so, the audit condition is complete, we no longer have a content agenda. So, we will just start with our resolutions. Councilor Tuesday, you have resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero, yes, Mr. Brown. No, all that removed, yeah, exactly. So, you have twenty twenty four dash zero two three?
Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero two three resolved by the council of the city, which is many of the minutes of the February fifth, twenty twenty four. City Council meeting, being proved in us.
Removed?
Supported.
And supported, and then we'll come on, can you answer this?
I thought, really, in my council proposal business, I just wanted it changed to, I am open to I am, I'm always open to open dialogue concerning city matters versus concerning city matters versus the email. And the record did not reach that way.
Did you capture that?
I am always open to conversations.
I am always open to open dialogue concerning city matters versus the red.
Yes, thank you, um, during my council proposals business, I noticed, um, uh, what, it's something in particular, just to clarify, so where it talks about, um, feedback being sought about two different projects, these were speaking about road project. So it says Wassa expansion, that's for Washington Ave, Washington Ave expansion or changes. And then after it says some, um, there's something that includes a dedicated building. And that was talking about a potential for a dedicated bus lane. So just to clarify those, and then this was probably me because, as we know, I don't drive. And so I, I probably very much said M twenty three, but I think it's supposed to be U S twenty three, I just don't know streets, cause yeah. So, we wanna correct it or did this leave it saying M twenty three?
Uh, U S twenty three.
But I was U S twenty three now.
Anything further for updates to the minutes? Let me know when you're ready, I know you're banking updates at the time, but.
If you could just point out where the bus lane would.
Oh, it's right under the wa, the, the bullet that says feedback means. Uh, so please follow up.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor of downtown Will Carson?
Yes.
Motion carries, yes.
Thank you, Councilor Susan, you have twenty four.
Indeed, resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero two four, resolution to, it's money city code to appeal ordinance. One zero five five, city code, chapter one, one, four, vehicle for hire, article three, authorized records, division two, license. It is resolved by the council of the city with lending that an ordinance entitled ordinance to amend it to any city codes. So we give order to one zero five five, city code, chapter one, one, four, vehicle for hire, three authorized records, division two, license. Be adopted on second and final reading in us.
Support. Then we'll then support it, uh, discussion on this, uh, so you're reading. And then please follow up.
Councilmember Sweet, yes. Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? Councilmember Houston, yes. Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Mayor of downtown Will Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one yes.
Thank you, Councilor Susan, you have the next resolution.
Indeed, I do, resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero two five. Resolution to approve an ordinance to amend city code, section seven, four, dash, one, two, six. To remove air pistol and air rifle from the definition of weapon, to bring this section into compliance with Michigan State law. M C O one three dot one one zero two, it is resolved by the council of the city is lining that the ordinance entitled ordinance to amend city code, section seven, four, dash, one, two, six. For more, even to remove air pistol and air rifle from the definition of weapon to bring second into compliance. State law M C F one two three, that, that one one zero two be approved on second and final reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers. This, this law is, Council Board has, has rightly said, uh, is needed to bring us into compliance with uh, something called preemption law, that State of Michigan asked, I believe some two decades ago. If that preemption law is one of some forty, uh, or more around the country, that other states also have that limits what's cities like ours can do, uh, with regard to the regulation of guns and weapons. And in various forms, what they basically do is say that cities, that's out of your purview. You may not pass legislation in these areas, you leave this up to the states. And we have a history of the states doing little or nothing. Every year, some four two thousand people die in this country from guns. So seventy six thousand survive those gunshots, often with mortifying injuries, wounds, things that they will live with for the rest of their lives. There's three hundred twenty seven people that are shot daily. And the State of Michigan tells us, we can't, we cannot protect our own citizens by passing laws in these areas. So, this is, one might argue, a little far field of the, uh, the intent when Council Board rightly brought this to us. Uh, he's quite right again, in, in saying we have to comply because the state has told us that we have to comply and cities are homeless and outstanding, cities are products of the state. Uh, so we have to do that, and so I'll reluctantly go along and, and support the, uh, the motion. But I, I think it's, it would be remiss of me not to at least mention that preemption laws uh, are the things that keep cities from, from protecting their citizens, right? It's not just in Michigan where this is a problem. Right? It's not just in Michigan where this is a problem. Uh, it's in states around the country, and even in the last couple of weeks. Uh, when the Kansas City Chiefs had their, uh, Super Bowl celebration. Uh, the mayor of Kansas City lamented the fact that he could not do anything, uh, within his city. To protect his citizens from this happening in the future, it was up to the state of Missouri. And Memphis, where it has some horrible challenges, uh, with gun violence, uh, the mayor there. Uh, has worked to pass some law legislation. Uh, only to have Tennessee Legislature take up preemption language that would further restrict what he can do. So I think it's important to, to remember this. Uh, this is something that was done again in some of forty states, it happened mostly two decades ago. And, uh, it's still on the books here. Uh, I think it's wrong, and it's wrong for cities. And I'd love to see, uh, the state of Michigan change that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. For the comment or discussion on the second reading of this. Resolution or ordinance. Any none, please follow up.
Councillor Ethan?
Yes.
Councillor Simmons?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries, yes.
Uh, Mayor Proton, you have our next resolution. Twenty twenty four dash, do you want to say?
Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero two six, resolved by the Council of the City, that's landing that following residents to appoint the city, that's landing boards and commissions as indicated below. Mike Voderid to the Board of the YCUA, with an expiration of March of twenty twenty seven, I assume.
Support.
If they're moving supportive. Alright, any discussion? Uh, I'll just say thank you, Mr. Voder, for your commitment to the YCUA. Um, I'm happy to support your real point. Further comment or discussion?
Mayor, it's for your comments.
Thank you. Next, any none, please follow up.
Councillor Members, Councillor Simmons?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Sweet?
Yes.
Councillor Tusev?
Yes.
Motion carries, yes.
Councillor Sweet?
Resolution number twenty twenty four, zero two seven, resolved by the Council of the City of Atlanta, where the existing public services yard has several buildings in need of. Prepare, and where the scope of these repairs presents an opportunity to examine the overall layout of the garden and improve its efficiency. And we're asked if the engineer, OHM, has prepared a proposal to verify the existing yard conditions and to identify the scope of future need. And therefore be it resolved that the city of Atlanta approves the proposal from OHM for GPS yard programming for fifty seven thousand nine hundred dollars. And further that any change orders may be approved by the city manager to facilitate the completion of this work, and I saw support.
They're moving supportive. Hi, ready to hold the meeting here. I'm ready to check the presentation. Questions from Council? Mayor Proton, I feel like that's a new revision. Okay.
I, um. I haven't known here, what are the costs for it? The open services, uh. Yeah, if you see with group overview, where. Where they do.
So these, this would just be certifying certain streets, it would be a, a negative impact of around six thousand dollars to our. You, uh, brother.
How we even had that?
We're not.
Alright. I know, you're doing a lot of things. Uh, so I think you're, you're answering Rachel.
Okay.
The global services, yeah, it's the global services, yeah.
Well, it's good services there, but it's.
What do they call?
I'm here, Ryan, another tip.
So there's a lot of background information that needs to be done to fully evaluate the entire property. Um, we have to look at easements, see what can be retrofitted, modified. Um, and look at the soils, see where can buildings can put, um, look at the needs of the city staff and. Um, you know, very. You know, storage, what, talking with staff, having interviews and, um, programming this space, we're kind of like an architectural work. Planning out where things can go based on the city needs. And, uh, all that goes into the survey of what's there, the environmental, so Bonnie's already gotten the phase one done for that. And, uh, we'll be taking that into account, um, I already mentioned some easements. Um, and then the existing space, how it's being used, um, any future, future needs, um, so Bonnie has another, um. Department item that she needs to have, we incorporate all of that into our study. And so that basically has been to a report, and you provide Bonnie the information, but it is a collaborative effort. Um, talking with staff to make sure that we're encompassing what they need in the future too.
And so this line is like the phase two you were talking about in the earlier presentation.
Right, not the phase.
Not the phase two, but the phase two. Right, okay.
Phase B.
Further questions or comments from Council about? Oh, Councillor Simmons, sorry.
Okay, okay. Um, so this is just a, a question in terms of at the, uh, once this is complete. Um, whether this would help us to have a fuller determination of the timeline and cost estimates for the different phases. Maybe I shouldn't say phases, I didn't know there are any fun notes, uh, the different kind of, um. Times of this process, because we know that we have some kind of immediate things, and the longer term things, and whether. This process will give us the sense of like what we're looking at in terms of timelines or completions and the overall cost that we could be looking at.
I would say that time is a little bit more. Swishy than that, so we'll be able to look at the report that they have, and we'll be able to see, oh, we can check out all these things on this list in this space. But these other things, we may or may not be able to fit in or fit in easily, or. You know, may want to reevaluate, do we actually want to do Brian? What are the pros and cons? Do we need a Brian space? While Brian has all of these pros and cons, but it needs four hundred square feet or a thousand square feet or whatever. Do we need it a thousand square foot much, considering a thousand square feet kind of cost us tax? So it will help us frame future discussions, but it will, it will help us ask better questions. Really, is what it will do.
Um, to my point, the, the assumption that there are no, uh, uh. No drives of building as built.
Right.
And so if we assume that there are people, who knows where they are.
Uh, because there aren't, because we've looked them up before, there aren't, I think there might be some for the front door, but they aren't actually as built. So when you build something, there is the design phase where you. You know, this is what you think you want, this is what you want, and then you get out in the field, you know, like, oh, there's a giant rock there, let's remove this column. The drawings that are produced after that, after you've removed that column or added seventeen different outlines or whatever, those are probably as built. So we have the permit drawings. I don't believe we have as built for anything. And the only building we would even have that. With more than fifty percent likelihood would be the front door.
Further questions? Councillor Sweet?
So this, once, once commenced, this is like a three to four month. You're thinking, probably.
Okay. Yep, we have about fourteen weeks right here, so yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure I don't. Further discussion?
I guess I'm just trying to figure out, I just have to put the timeline. That's, uh, three and a half months, this back, um.
July? Yeah.
We have the RFPs back. Or the settlement of the barn and the, the.
Probably August. Yeah, all the August, September.
If those are. It's like.
Go ahead, kind of.
If those are for, those are easier, those, those for the, uh.
Uh, commission assessment and programming proposals for the other spaces. Yes.
Oh, oh, that.
From earlier today.
Yeah, probably not, okay.
No, there's no.
Oh, no.
So I was talking about what we passed last time to get OHM to get the, the RFPs for the assessment of, uh.
To get them in a functional space as it is.
Well, just the reports back from that, we, we put it out in our P, we'll get the proposals.
Uh, right, so. OHM is preparing to bid documents, those bid documents are currently underway, we have the engineers. Michael Spurback, thank you. He was out two weeks ago, yeah, not last Friday, but the Friday before, yeah. And so those documents are underway, those will be back. Well, hopefully in March. Yeah, so July, probably, so about the same.
So midsummer will be here.
Right, but these are extended processes because stability has to happen at this level, we'll give you two.
Right, but in terms of having all the, all the input, the, the, make decisions in summer.
I could, we're using assessments. Can we use more of this? Alright, any other questions or comments on this? Thanks for the talk, everybody. See you then. Please follow up.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Sweet?
Yes.
Councillor Tusev?
Yes.
Councillor Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries, yes.
Thank you. Councillor Simmons, you have our next resolution. Two twenty four dash two two.
Yes, now therefore it is resolved, whereas the City of Atlanta does wish to decertify. The, uh, to decertify the following local streets. With distances and extents as noted below, being a total centerline distance of. Five thousand two hundred sixty one feet. Um, and then there's a chart with each of the street names that extends and then they certify distance to be read. To the record, resolution to be adopted. And I saw.
Support.
Been moved and supported, welcome back to our. Um, so I have for you a, uh, proposal to decertify city streets for the purposes of active due loan funding. So annually, we are certified to end dot, uh, what streets are completely active and open. Uh, Congress needs a little bit of tidying up this year, so. Any questions? Mayor Proton?
Oh.
Sorry.
No, no, come forward.
Um, some of these are pretty obvious, but, um, when were these vacant, some of them vacant, I mean, I mean, yeah, you just can't just stand and get.
Newton Street? Yeah, so that's been vacated for quite some time, uh. Monroe Street looks like it was vacated back in two thousand, like two thousand even. The Warner Street, internal streets were vacated as part of the flat vacation, which I think was just a little need to have, so. Um. It's in a sort of, from nineteen forty to today, basically.
Is there a form of process for that vacation? I know we've done, uh, vacating of, uh, uh. Out. And we had one issue kept before it's burned, uh, vacated the street around, uh.
Of course, right. Yeah, so the process to vacate the street. Uh, is for the purposes of planning and land control, and that's what's laid out in the ordinance, and that's what's laid out in the state act, the land division act that we're with. Um, this is a separate process, this is for a funding distribution for not for not, so it is the gas and weight tax.
Right, but when these, when these, I mean, these seem to have been on the record and are now going to be certified. But there wasn't a process for those to vacate those, like, maybe for council. Thirty, like, that would have been taken off to go to that.
The decertification process does not.
Now, two things, just to close this up, I think one thing I'm hearing is whether in general for process, when we have. If we do have something that comes to, um, vacate, that then. Whether that can be part of the process to make sure that we can certify in that moment, whether that can be part of ongoing process of the year.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, my question, which is getting to what, um. City manager, Alina, I think was about to offer before, but was. Just in terms of, so we got a little bit of why, that there's many, there's a couple of different reasons why these different things are being to certify. And, um, just the impact of the money to the city, um, it seems like it's not very much. Actual street, um, but if you just say what that impact.
So it's a formula funding, and it's not a consistent amount every year. So it is impossible for me to say, well, the funding impact is going to be X. Uh, looking at some past distributions, it looks like it's going to be less than five thousand dollars per year overall. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. Please follow up.
Councillor King?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Wilcox?
Yeah.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Sweet?
Yes.
Councillor Tusev?
Yes.
Councillor Simmons?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor McLean, you have our next resolution.
Resolution two oh two four dash oh two nine, whereas the city budget is a little document, essential or functional government. And whereas it is essential to understand a budget set are sustainable while meeting the city's statutory obligations. And whereas updates on city projects, projected revenues, departmental objectives and needs will assist the council to better strategies have. Best to allocate funds to ensure city goals are achieved and facilitate a more detailed review of the city and departmental budget during each annual budget process. And whereas an increase in council participation in the city's budget will better allow the city to pivot in case of crisis. And whereas the body deserves right to access the state of the city's finances and if funds are being allocated effectively. And whereas a committee comprised of three council members, the city manager, city clerk, and finance director would create better flexibility. Increase, increase public trust and create better processes on how the needs of the city are being addressed. And whereas council members serving on this committee will be selected during the organizational meeting while in the general election that year. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Atlanta established a finance committee. With intent to review departmental budgets throughout the year, monitor if the allocations are effective, and understand threats that need to be addressed in future budgets. Be it further resolved that this committee meet at least bi-monthly and report to the council as a whole regularly throughout the fiscal year. I still move.
Or. Mayor's move, the motion and support, uh, so I don't know if you want to speak to us first and.
Madam Chair, um, first I'll note that, uh, I inserted the word at least, so I want everybody to be aware of that. In the second, uh, we have resolved laws, so the, what you had before you read. That the committee should meet bi-monthly in order to give us a little bit more flexibility if we should need it. Uh, not, you know, that free clue us from meeting if we need to. Uh, I've inserted the words at least, so I'll make that out to you. Uh, and then, um, similarly to where I think. Council member Wilcox had mentioned last, at the last meeting. Uh, I think it's good practice and allows us to dig a little deeper into, uh, into the budgets, the budget process. And do regular updates and evaluations of where we stand. Uh, it's a, as a body, gives us a little bit more flexibility, uh, to work with the administration and to share a public manner. Uh, with the citizens, where we stand, uh, budget term, budget term work. Uh, and where the city's budget stands is, is important, I know, to a lot of my constituents and my suspects, constituents across the, the city. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Proton, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, the. Statement in here about, uh, this, you know, this would be appointed at the organizational meeting after the election, but I, I had. Originally intended for this to be formed prior to that, so, um. Inserting that before, at this point, um, moving forward, this is maybe for the end of the year. Um, so I don't know how we amend this to include that. Um, so I don't know how we amend this to include that.
So, Bar or Cynthia, do you have any feedback on?
Was the, is the intent to have this committee meet now or at the new council's seat? That will be still in this year, so we're very close to budget now, I'm not entirely sure that if that's what you would like to do, then we could. We could form a committee now and then have it again. You see it at the organizational meeting, it's just the cleanest way to do it within the council.
Right, now, when I brought this up previously, I thought this would be uh. Organized before, before that organization meeting, um, so yeah, like they have that establishment, how we realize you wouldn't be the budget, um. And uh, I just made, would be true to take it just.
Matt, the clarify question, I just to make sure I'm understanding, so. I know that the city manager and staff are working on the budget right now, but with the formation of the committee, we do it now, we need to monitor the budget once it passes. Or to monitor the process of the creation of this new budget?
I think the point being the creation of it, right?
Councilmember Simmons?
Um, I have a couple of questions, but on this point, I was just wondering. Um, I also was wondering about the timeline and then also, so we do that organizational meeting, so it's not every year, so. Um, would this committee be meant to sit then for duration in between the general elections? Um, so I guess the way it says, there's like the general election that year or something, so maybe. It should be clear that this is for a duration of time.
City general elections are in November on a given year.
Yeah, yeah, so this is the same duration as if we were um, as like liaisons and things, so they don't change until. The next general election and that or they should move, so this year twenty four, then it would happen again in twenty six and so on and so forth. Right.
Um, the other questions or things that I had, one is, um. So this might, this might already be clear, one was just how the members will be determined, and so. That might be similarly to how we do for the different liaisons too, where it's just kind of like asking who's interested kind of thing.
Yeah, so I think when we talked about it, um, before these resolutions were brought forth, we talked about trying to have representation from each board. And then um, I want to say in both of them, potentially having the mayor, whoever's in the role at any given time, sit on this committee as well. Um, and so, yeah, we just discuss it or whoever ideas we discuss it and choose based on him on that. Um, are you asking to delineate that in a form of meeting as well the process or this one?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think what was my, one of my questions was actually, does it need to be three, and I was thinking, I figured that it was saying three to have one from each board. Um, I, I'm just wondering whether we want that to specifically say that, because as it is now, just an overall, right? Like, some of us already have multiple committees and boards, big commissions, and um. And so I just wonder whether having it detailed in that way might be overburdening us, um, when. It may not be necessary to do so when we think about us as a body as a full team, right, so. That was just a question of whether it feels like it's necessary to have three members of council. And that kind of delineation of having somebody from each ward.
Madam Mayor.
That's all I think, sure.
Now, Madam Mayor and and councilman, would it make sense to you perhaps to have. Language in the whereas it simply says committee comprised of up to three council members, that would engage the level of interest?
Yeah, that would, that would work for me, yes.
Um, do we want to put a amendment on the form of this, we can discuss it, or folks want to talk about it? Now, as it is, we can move it as a friendly.
I'm happy to accept it as a friendly.
Did you, did you support this or you did?
Okay, alright, okay, perfect, so friendly amendments of up to. Up to three members of council for the finance. Mr. Barr?
I'm not sure if I heard correctly, but is the mayor going to be a member of the committee in any event?
So I, no, I think I can, the mayor can be one of the members, yeah. It would, for form purposes, if it, if it's the man three members of council, I need four people.
Intent, as I understood it at the last meeting, was this going, was going to be an open meeting?
Oh, so it is, oh, yes, so. Um, so I think when we were discussing it. We talked about the mayor sitting on both of those um, committees, but I do think that what you shared, council members, depending on whoever's in the role of mayor, it may not. It may not make sense, right, depending on the interest and um, and time constraints being that the, the mayor is also assigned to multiple. Boards and committees um, by virtue of the role, so. Maybe leaving it as three council members and that could include the mayor, I think is okay. Uh, and move forward from there unless there's an objection there. Alright, and we go to questions. Further discussion or questions about the developments of the finance committee? Mr. Barr?
What's it going to be, a committee or he went to be at the back, alright.
If we're, this is, maybe it's going to be functioning along this budget, it needs to be formed immediately, we're already in our department of budget discussions. So we would need to gradually leave this month, not really next month.
How much of a burden does that put on you at this point in practice?
I mean, we, it, it, it all depends, I, I'm not entirely sure, we could, we can. Form the budget, uh, once it's delivered to council, then we could, we could have a session uh, with that committee. But it all, it all depends on exactly what detailed information they want, if we're going to go through each department's budget. It, it, it all depends on what this, this specific committee's mission, at least for this budget. And starting with the, the next budget, my, my thought process would be, we start, um. You know, and probably in December, and then we go through each month, we review each department's budget, and we will get this. The, the past fiscal year, and we'll see how we can tighten things up, make things better, um. I mean, we could definitely, you know, review it um, prior to this budget, but we essentially be able to meet one time. So I don't know exactly how effective it would be, but staff will put it together at the council's association.
I think my thought would be that maybe if we do immediately comprise this group that we review what you put together and go through it. That, that's only one voice, um, rather than kind of restart the process that you are already working on and then prepare, like you said, with the process on board for the next budget year. I saw your handbook, my third row.
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if this concept I fully understood what you were suggesting, but I. When I think about what, how this might function, uh, I can imagine it functioning well, even if it's one or two meetings for this budget. That it, it be completely consistent with the existing. Schedule of what the. What the administration is planning to do, so wouldn't, I mean, I think you have to be highly sensitive to not put additional burdens on the process that is already. Fine consuming and, and challenging for staff.
And as I was saying, we, if council still chooses to, and when the day is, now we'll, we'll get things together and we'll, perhaps after the budget is passed to council. We can set up a meeting then, um, and then potentially we can just have two meetings in one month, you know, depends on how council invites a bunch.
I, you just said we have to find it, so we didn't set the same line, yeah. Uh, further comment or discussion from council or thoughts on the creation of a committee immediately and how that would function?
Okay, so as far as we, if we do decide. To constitute immediately, then we can remove this whereas clause or mark that.
Uh, from what I've heard so far, it seems to me that if you're going to go with up to three, you want to do, and that is friendly amendment. Then if you want to have an immediate uh, committee, you have that, a provision saying. And then a man ad hoc committee for this year to be appointed, but not less, rather than three numbers, something like that.
Yeah, to substitute the uh, form the app of the organizational meeting, it's a, on immediately.
And then following.
And then immediately following that, just like the, our council, just like these members.
But then we would, I mean, I mean, as a part of the general, the organizational meetings are going forward in terms of the rules, probably this will operate.
Yeah, that's how we'll counsel.
I'm sure Jesus.
These would be. Over.
Yep.
Right, required viewing. Which, that way that's not going to put a burden on you to have other meeting, but.
Yeah.
The same thing, I get. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not having that at all, I mean, we can go forward, that's fine, you know, I, I recognize where we are in the planning process. That's, that's fine. Either.
Okay, so wait, so it's fine to wait, or we can move forward with what we just discussed?
Whatever, whatever.
I don't have a way, I don't have a way. But do you want to move forward with it?
I do, but I just want.
It's up to three, so it could be one, so we want to move forward with it now, we can remove your, the amendment that we were just talking about over here.
So. Madam Mayor, thank you, uh, a good one. And in the where, the final whereas clause, which currently reads council members serving on this committee will be selected during the organizational meeting. The amendment would insert between the words selected and during. This year immediately and going forward during the organizational meeting. So I'll read the whole whereas clause, council members serving on this committee will be selected this year immediately and. Come up going forward, come up during the organizational meeting following the general election that year.
Been moved?
Support.
Support, any further discussion on the proposed amendments? I think it sounds good. They not, it's my wrong event.
Amendment? Mayor Proton Wocaxton?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tussin?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Motion carries in.
Okay, so now we have an amended resolution, and there for the discussion on the amended full resolution. We, please follow.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tussin?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wocaxton?
Yes.
Motion carries in.
Okay, so we will now have to do who those folks are, right? So, um, I volunteer myself as tribute. Um, Councilmember McLean, I know you wanted to participate, of course.
I would jump.
Is there anyone else for our up to three? I will, I'm, I'm bothering Sarah, okay, so we have three, council member King, McLean, and myself. Will be reviewing today.
Um, tomorrow I will send out a, a dugable and try to get the, uh, the first meeting started.
Thank you. Alright, um, you have our next resolution.
Mayor, this one's a little shorter, but not much shorter. Resolution number two oh two four dash zero three zero. Whereas the council wishes for administration to ensure staffing levels are maintained to optimize the service, services. And whereas the council intends to invest its employees to ensure they have the necessary tools to serve this community. And whereas understanding the needs of personnel is essential to aid in budgeting to support each city department achieving its goals. And whereas a committee comprised of three council members, city manager, city clerk, the H R manager, and finance director. Would increase the understanding of needs, be they staffing levels or training, to accurately budget to ensure the capacity of staff to serve the city. And whereas it is the council and city administration intent to increase transparency in the decision-making process, especially when it concerning city finances. And whereas the council members serving on this committee will be determined not less than one month prior to the meeting and, and members cannot sit on the committee for consecutive years. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Espalani established a personnel committee. With rest of the staffing needs of the city and require that it meets at least once yearly prior to goal sessions. I still.
Been moved?
Support.
And supported. Alright, discussion. Mayor Porson?
Uh, again, Andrew, I, I, city manager, I apologize if I get back to you and email the student, but, um. The scheduling of this, I have a question about the non-consensual review of the meeting, um, and why that was, uh.
The intent behind that is I wanted to engage with all council uh, about our uh, needs and staffing. So I thought it would be helpful that the city council, every member will have been a part of this. But, I'm sorry.
But.
Could you clarify that again?
Oh.
I want to pass it forward and you can listen, um. So my intent was that if we switch it each year, then all of council in that seated council. Will have the opportunity to counsel, I got changes every two years, so everyone would get a, a chance to really. See what the needs of, of, of staffing is, the needs of training, and, and that marriage of the decision, but that, that was back off dress.
Uh, Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, I, um. Well, I have questions about that for, for the same kind of reason that I said before, too. Um, this committee, I will say, I have, I'm still a little bit. Um, less clear about like the functionality, um, and how it will. Yeah, so I just less clear about that myself, um, and then it also seems like it both. I was trying to figure out whether this is an ad hoc group, which is part of what I thought we had to kind of talk about, and that seems like what it talks about. Not less than one month prior to a meeting, so like there's something that comes up, but then also it says that. There will be, that there will be required to be a meeting at least once during prior to the goal session.
But the intent is just to have the ad hoc committee called right a month before the goal sessions. Staffing levels would be a great part of goal sessions, I thought we needed a couple of times to, to do that. This committee really, it's, it's relevance is only budgetarily, city council has other value between numbers and hires. A little bit, however, we can understand where budget allocations need to be as in terms of number of staff as well as training.
Um, that's helpful, so maybe, um. It's, it could, then we could put have it say one month prior to. Like have it somehow tied to the goal session in that way too, and then I, I also wonder about, um. Because this is primarily budgetary, whether. That could also be part of what comes up as part of the finance of the committee.
If that's how the council wishes to proceed, that, that would be.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm asking, because I'm trying to get a sense, y'all, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm doing this out of deep care. Deep care, and so I'm just wondering, um, you know, if there's different conversations that would happen in this group that would feel different. Than what we come forward during our goal setting sessions, which does, you know, does talk about staffing and, you know, I do think it makes sense to be able to kind of pull that. Together more as we think about the budget, but. I just want to put that question.
Well, I think I would want to ask Mayor Porson and Councilmember McLean, what you was overall intent, because you brought this forward, it was that fit?
Right, so in my notes here that uh, I had anticipated that this would be meeting uh, at least quarterly. Um, and not just once a year to put a budgetary thing, it's a, it's a fine line between that, because um, as city manager. As long as it stated, um. Uh, hiring and, and, and. Uh, hiring and, and, and management of staff is, is certainly. Um, this was not intended to be, uh. I didn't see this as a, as a once a year, um, strictly budgeting, um, question. You know, we have, we have many, uh, positions that are being filled, um, and training and, and, you know. It seemed like there were, and I, and. This is a precarious situation, right? And so I wanna be supportive to, and be more attentive to this, um, you know, is this the mechanism to be that? Or is it just, um, much more frequent conversation with city managers to understand, you know, what's going on and, and raise concerns. I thought this would be a mechanism to, to have that be a, uh, a, an open conversation, um. But there, that. The intent was to be supportive, not be affirmative, but, but you know, with the, the staffing, uh, charges that we have now and all the positions that are getting hired. Um, you know, and, and with some of the situations that happened in the past, um, you know. I thought having, having a more open dialogue, or just city manager and main council about, about staffing, uh, would be.
Madam Mayor, I would concur with what Mayor Proton has said, um, and toward the end, he's. Explicitly got at the reason that I think the committee is a good idea, uh, and that is given the workforce situation that, that. Repays along with just about every other employer there is right now, that. Would be really intentional about how we go out and find employees, uh, as well as the importance of. Of casting a net widely enough and in the right places, so that we make sure that our city staff, uh, looks like community. So that's important, another consideration.
Thank you. Further comments or questions about the formation of the personnel committee?
So in our discussion last week. In that, it was, we were going the direction of budget. With what council member, uh, McLean and Mayor Proton, well, Carson stated, it essentially seems more that it's more of an idea of. Controlling what staff, uh, is hired, it seems a little bit more like for managing than I was understanding. Um, I'm not entirely certain what is meant by support, but. Trying to add rudder to the, how we hire, who we hire. If council would like to have a hiring practice, then that practice should be codified in ordinance. Um, and not necessarily discussed for types of months. I prefer it be more of set policy saying this is the diversity levels that we have, if that's even, you know, legal. But not to be a, a constant, uh, or not constant, but orderly review of all staffing levels. Again, it, it might not even be necessary, as positions are filled. So it just, it seems, it seems a little bit more of an overreach.
Mr. Bar.
This is an area the council has to be very careful about with the city charter and the city manager before it's done.
Thank you. Um, so. Listening to what everyone has said so far, what I was thinking about and maybe need some clarity on was, yes, I thought it was connected more to. Budget, but also could this then just be managed in term, in terms of information by. Us asking for like a number of openings, you know what I mean, on a, on a. Quarterly basis or something like that, I mean, I guess I want more information about what exactly we're trying to get out of it. Um, rather than things that we could meet with the city manager about, as it stands, as council members right now. I'm just asking.
You know, I, I, I can talk to that, and I, I appreciate your comments, uh, uh, city manager, um. We admitted this was a precarious position, um, I think I can, I can, uh. Approach what I want out of this in an informal manner, and just have more frequent conversations with, with, uh, the city manager. About staffing, um, and, and have that be the case, because if it's. If it's gonna get into this, I did, I can, I can follow up with that online, you know, and it seems like. It's ambiguous to everybody, and I'm not explaining it very well, so I, I'm, I'm.
Um, every order I was rolling.
Uh, then we wanna withdraw, this should be voted, yeah. Mr. Bar, what do you use?
So why don't you withdraw?
So, draw, do you, are you up there?
Yes.
Alright, so we've withdrawn this one of the table. Okay. Moving on, Councilmember Simmons, we have our next resolution.
Resolved by the council of the city of Zulani, whereas city council adopted ordinance thirteen twenty five. Uh, community benefits on September eleven, two thousand eighteen, and whereas the development of the ordinance was commute, was in community partnership between. Between the city and the community group rising for economic, um, with economic democracy in it's being. Uh, and already, and whereas the ordinance. Requires that a developer requesting an incentive, citizen committee must be formed to negotiate an agreement. And whereas the ordinance included a sunset clause three years following the adoption of the ordinance. And whereas since it sunset, three developments have followed the process and successfully negotiated a community benefits agreement. And whereas it is city council's intent that developments requesting an incentive abided by the ordinance until it is read adopted. Or as, or as is, or isn't, as amended. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Zulani require any development requesting incentive from the city. Be required to adhere to the process as enacted by the approval of ordinance thirteen twenty five. Until council takes further action, and I'm so.
Support.
Been moved and supported, alright.
So just, uh, just a little background behind this, I just wanna provide a, a little bit. More legitimacy to this, I know it's a sunset ordinance, and I just want everything to be clear to both developers and staff. How we will be moving forward until, uh, eventually this ordinance is read adopted is, or.
Uh, questions or comments from council?
Yes, thank you, so, yeah, I, um, I was, I'm hoping that we could, um. Talk a little bit about our process and timeline for updates and renewal. One of the things I know that came up when talking with a developer looking to do a project here about the C B O. Was, um, you know, there's, there's this like, um, you know, if council is going to make the changes. It creates this lack of certainty about what's expected, and this ordinance was all about adding certainty into this process. And so, and I think that there are some clear days now that we've had three projects go through the process. Um, there are some different areas where I know, um, there are some improvements, um, to be made. Around things like the timeframe, around ad hoc committee, uh, noticing recruitment of members, things like that, and so. Um. One of the things I was thinking about is like different people who might wanna have involved in this process or have. Space, uh, to talk to, including, uh, the ready, you know, ready members as well as. The folks who have served on the ad hoc committees, um, too, um. Uh, as well as council members and staff who have participated, so I, I would imagine this would. Uh, likely be a work session, um, to do that, and so I know we've talked about. This needing to happen, and so I'm hoping that we can maybe think about that more concretely. And think about when we can schedule a work session to do that.
Thank you. Further comments or questions about this resolution? Well, um, I guess Councilmember Simmons, my question, would you make this to be for the city manager? How would you like us to go about, um, making a decision about a, a work session or moving forward on? Um, amending this ordinance or?
I think there should definitely be a work session, but until that time, I think we need to solidify what is expected of staff to do with developers. So right now, there's some ambiguity, um, I just would like this to be codified by resolution and then revisited. Um, with, uh, with an ordinance amendment and further review with, uh, participants already. As well as members that have gone through a few C B A processes, and then take a holistic approach to that, but this is, this is separate from that. Just we need to say, this is, this is going to be what is followed as a development process until further changes are paid.
Thank you.
Or council can determine that staff is no longer obligated to follow this, it's up to council.
Thank you.
So then, do you have, because I think that, um. I think it makes sense for there to be clarity for staff, and I know that. At least, it feels like at least two years, we've been saying, council's been saying, okay, yeah, we should do this, and so. I'm wondering whether we could either put something on a schedule to know that we will actually revisit it, because. Um, I think that the longer term piece in terms of what we actually want developers to hold to. We might act, we might actually have better things for the city to actually implement too. So the longer that we don't do it, the longer, you know, it, it just create that, so I'm just wondering if we can. Um, you know, I definitely support being able to be more clear for staff, um, and for developers. Um, to know that we're still following this process, I'm just hoping that we could be more clear about like what our timeline will be.
So I, maybe that was my question on the clear before, I was asking, like, what do you perceive? And then for city manager in terms of what we have upcoming, like together, trying to figure about what would be a good time for us to do that, so we don't keep picking this.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, I know that we are about to head into budget, I know that we have to still hire our clerks, so in the, in the. Perceivable future, the next couple of months, we will have a lot of meetings. Um, and so what would it require for us to prepare to do this, and then to get on to?
I guess the question I would have is thinking about how soon would there be a possible development that would. This, that would be possibly going through a C B L.
Yeah.
As I brought up a couple of years ago, when I asked if council would. Um, pass a brownfield contingent about a C B A process approval and D D A approval. So there is already a development that would engage this process.
And, um, and we said that we were gonna wait until some things happened, right, which then kicked off when. When they would actually go through the process.
We haven't received the brownfield to review yet, so we don't necessarily know when that's going to be. It's currently slated for, um, this next meeting, however, again, we haven't received the brownfields, it's difficult. To understand when it will truly be coming forward, but if council doesn't want that specific development to go through with that. Then, yes, we can just advise staff not to follow the current C B O, and then we can move forward with, uh, uh, the adoption. But we just want some clear direction, that's all, either whatever council decides is what council decides, so just want clear direction.
So then in this, when thinking about the timeline for this, then, um, it seems that if we. If we don't, if we're not gonna move on it before we're gonna be in a new process, where there would be a new. Uh, ad hoc committee, then, um, then I think we, we should just be clear that. Um, for any current development, that they will be going through what we currently have, any changes. Would then be for sus- subsequent, uh, projects. And, um, and then with that, I would say that it would be great for us to do this maybe at the. You know, end of spring, beginning of summer.
So, I believe with this.
I, I, I have already spoken with the developer regarding this, and said that this has been precedent, this is how. Um, city council has been approaching this, um, and again, I just want to bring some validity for the specific process, I. Definitely wanting to have a work session to really kind of iron some things out in this ordinance, I have, I have some updates as well, or some suggestions. So I'm, I'm all for that, so if we wanna put something on, maybe in April at some point, that would be great.
And I just, so I was just gonna ask, just to verify though, that we had already made the decision about what would begin the process for this C B. Oh, um, or C B A, with the potential development of the brownfield, and so in order to make that. Decision that would then start that process, this in general is saying that until we make any changes, any, any development. Will be following the current process that we have, so while I think we, it sounds like we're talking about one development, we're talking about in general, anything else would have come to us. If they would know, they are gonna follow this C B, C B A process, if they wanna develop it within the city, and they ask for any incentives. Correct?
Yes, that's true.
Thank you. Further discussion on this resolution? Being on, please follow up.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton, well, Carson.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries in.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Simmons, you have our next resolution.
In the resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero three two, a resolution will. Hire Andrew Linga at his body city manager and will prove the employment and that. It is resolved by the council of the city that's running the end, maybe it's hereby hired as city manager of the city of Zulani, and that the attached employment contract. And its terms and conditions are hereby approved, and the mayor and deputy city clerk are authorized to sign said contract for and on behalf of the city. Subject to satisfactory completion of all pre-employment conditions, and approved by the city attorney and I surrender.
Been moved and supported. Alright, so we have for us, um, our city manager employment agreement. Um, provided to us by returned bar. Um, what questions or comments this council have about?
I do have a question about the sign on bone, I am one. Is that a normal, a normal part of the contract, or is that something that has been highlighted on the nail? Like, is that traditional that you can the contract, that's what my question is.
Mr. Bar.
Yes.
Get into that question.
I guess, um.
Let me describe the concept of the, um, problem of the city to come here and then if. When the city council makes a decision to hire a city manager, they sent, sent out a request for applications, and the, in that request. They sent out some of the general frameworks. And some years ago, it started that there was a contract with the city manager that had a lot of provisions, and it was drafted by labor council. And, uh, the ideas that most of the things were covered except the salary that was generally not in the request for applications. And then there were other things like retirement, time off, education, different things like that, and the process is that. Uh, we take the last contract with the city manager, and the new city manager that's in it. Decides what they would request, that's put in this contract, that then comes to city council. And so this is the, this is a draft contract, but the city manager is asking to. And in regard to the specific question, uh, previous to this time, I don't believe there has been a signing bonus. By now, perhaps, uh, and, and that, I don't remember ever having.
I, I can add to that, there, there, that's my knowledge, has that never been included, I added that because I'm going to be expected to. Essentially train the new clerk, um, which will be outside the duties of the city manager, so that's why I included that.
And so, I just, and, and the reason why, for me, that question came up, because normally the signing bonus. Is when someone is coming to a new company, and he is already an internal person, being, um, coming from the clerk. And then for me, the five thousand dollars for the signing bonus, and the five thousand dollars for the. And the five thousand dollars for the purchase of a new home. I personally think we should do one or the other.
Sorry, okay. Council member Sweet. And then my first.
Well, if I'm, just for clarification, if I'm reading this correctly, the home is a reimbursement if that was to happen. Um, and so that is not an immediate right now. Is that correct, Mr. Barr?
Yes, just um. Council has talked about this in the past, and we haven't really put it in practice, but EMU, for instance, what's only is hired there, they. Offered them just a bonus or a consideration if they move into the city. And uh, I don't think the city's ever done this before, but this, this was an attempt, and this is what that is. The five thousand is only there if, uh, Mr. Helanga changes the president's moves and buys a place in the city.
We've included in Ralph Wang's contract and Darwin McLeary's, there was a, a. Essentially a ten thousand dollar loan in one of those contracts. And if the employee stayed for so long, then it would be forgiven by city council or the city.
Thanks, officer. Uh, Mayor Forten, you have your hand up next in the conference.
Uh, this has been a confusing issue over the years, um with uh Mayor McLeary with. Um, in terms of what the requirement was, uh, at one point in the city, I think there was the, there was some discussion about having. Requirement that the, the city manager resided in the city there when I first got on council and. And uh, Mr. Clear, there, there was some allows for, for him. If he didn't move into the city, then he got some. Other compensation for a car or something like that. And it wasn't really clear on how that worked. And then when. Um, uh, manager Megan Mullen changed residence that came before council. Um, that was continued, and I, and people seem to have it figured out, but, but she moved from. Uh, Ipsy township to, to Canton, and at that time, it came before council for discussion. I thought because there was a cause uh or a stipulation that, that the city manager had moved within the city limits. And we gave her an exception for that.
In the distant past, there was a provision that the city manager within ninety days being hired had to move into the city. And there were some similar uh provisions for police and fire. But uh, there's legislature in the state of Michigan that struck down that type of provision. And it provides that you can only require that they live within twenty-five miles.
Uh, council member Simmons?
Yes, so um. I have one more other question, but just to say, like, I agree with um. The questions raised by also member King about the signing bonus, um. It, it does seem odd to have a signing bonus, I think, um, in this situation. I am um, definitely, I, I agree, I, I'm aware about the EMU program. Um, which I. Do remember that, I think, being like a, a loan forgiveness um after a certain amount of time. And so this is a little different than that, but I would say, given um the housing market in the city. That um. Then I'm fine not having it, like, it'd be, it'd be such to be reimbursement as opposed to maybe a loan forgiveness. Although um, I think also for the city, whether um, thinking about a certain amount of time. With the city might be in good interest for us. Um, you know, after that, that, so that might be something to consider. Um, you know, maybe like, you know, two years, at least two years after. After what purchase remaining or something. And then the other question I have. Is around um, in thinking about um some of these, the professional development and just thinking about more clarity. And I know this came up. As um, as part of the hiring process and conversation. Uh, around professional development and recognizing that I think. I am a huge proponent for ongoing professional development and growth. Uh, I also think that maybe the uh, like, the needs and time might shift. Um, over the years, so what, you know, thinking about um. Whether the, this not less than twenty-four hours per year. Um, needs to be as stringent as, as it is. Um, and then also, I just had questions about what twenty-four hours per year actually means. Is this credit hours or, you know, how, what does that actually look like um in terms of. How many sessions or how that would be counted, like time in a session, you know, because there's obviously so much, much variety. And so I'm just trying to get a little bit better clarity about what is intended by that, um, twenty-four hours.
Mr. Barr first.
Uh, with continuing education. Yeah, the providers usually provide credit hours for the particular class. And they, they value them in two hours and six hours, whatever that refers to would be the credit for a pay, actual pay.
So I, the only thing, because I do see that some other places, but just to, again, for clarity, so for instance. If we, like at the MML conference or things like that, not all of those are credits you get credit hours for. And so would those count toward this, or would it, or is this only focused on things that are credit hour bearing?
Well, we can, we can sharpen that up. Uh, that was something that, uh, Mr. Ling and I talked about. As far as the number of hours, but we didn't define exactly what the hours would be, but um. I, I would say that it would be credit hours.
I guess, Mayor Forten, I think you could probably, what they're talking about. The professional development portion, maybe this was clear up some of this.
Right, and so I hadn't gone back to that twenty-four hour per year. Um, so the twenty-four hours is at discretion with the uh, the city manager. Um, but within the ICMA, um, that assessment, uh, that early assessment is a. Straightforward thing, but within the requirements for credentialing in ICMA, that's forty hours per year. Um, of continuing education. And so, a lot of those uh would be there. So then the question is, you know, with the twenty-four hours and the forty hours. There's a lot of hours of um. Education required. And so I could see, you know, with the, the forty hours that's included in the ICMA. Never could relax the twenty-four hours specifically.
So are we saying that we would relax or remove that, that number and leave it as completing the ICMA?
Right, and that, that credentialing is a multi-year program. And so, uh, that would be forty hours a year. For multiple years.
So in paragraph five, we're gonna set the employees' reach for ten yearly training. Of the, that's your twenty-four hour, and here, strike of that, that's your twenty-four hour.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that agreeable.
And that, that leaves open that, uh, for the reimbursement of those things that go outside of the ICMA. But there's no requirement that.
Thank you. Alright.
And so I got a quick question. So during the process that I see, um, I don't have that pulled up. I know it was addition, I'm not printing, but that is kind of takes like the mentorship that was discussed, don't I? Is that?
That is part of that program.
The whole, the cohort, the whole program.
And also, I honestly would move to remove the sign on, the signing bonus. I know it's a signing bonus, but I would. I, I wanna move to remove that.
Right, so move, is there support? I'll support. Alright, so movement supported discussion. Council member McLean.
Madam Mayor, uh, as I wrote with the contract prior to this meeting. Um, one of the things that struck me was what incredible value I think. Mr. London brings to the, to the city, uh, for what I think is an eminently reasonable. Actual uh price. And I was gonna speak to this before the, before the motion. Uh, but it's appropriate here, I think even more so. I won't support the, the motion, I think. About job market, um, everybody on this council knows how tough it was to find the right person. Um, I got also mentioned that since I was the only person that didn't have a chance to vote. Uh, but I could say that I certainly would have supported the council and its wisdom, uh, the choice that it made. But since that choice hasn't been made, I've heard from multiple people, uh, that was a wise choice. And so I wanna, you know, support what the council has done. Uh, and I want to provide what I think is fair uh remuneration. And I think the salary, uh, along with the bonus is reasonable. And uh, I also like the five thousand dollar incentive for moving into town if he, he so chooses. Uh, that's up to him, but of course, I don't want the record is also hating the preemption language related to housing. I would say his supposed loss as well.
Thank you. For, Mayor Forten.
Um, I just have a question about the uh, the, at a previous meeting, we agreed to uh increase. Manager at length salary because of the duties that he has as a clerk as well. Um, and what the timeline for that changing over is. Because if, if we're talking about five thousand dollars, that's part of the training. Um, that kind of depends on who we hire for that position and how much training that, that takes. But I don't know what the end of the increase is um relative to the.
So the. The resolution states what city council hires, that's the clerk, then that would, that would cease.
So the contract has, yeah, the provision says that the salary shall be reduced upon hiring.
Yeah, so as soon as we hire someone, that's ours.
That is what's up.
Yeah. Uh, Congress sweet and then.
So for clarity, is that that person's first day of employment?
Like a start date? When they work.
Or when they receive the job off, like, it is?
What I.
You know what I mean, for clarity?
Hire, meaning when they're working too, when they get paid, they start, their start date, then that would cease from happening.
Madam Mayor and city manager, is it fair to say that. We expect there will be training, ongoing training needs uh after that person starts?
Regardless of the experience that this person has, there's gonna be things that are outside. Or duties such as the administrative hearings bureau. Um, so there's gonna be some acclimation to that, getting used to the elections, um, at least in the city. So I thought I was actually being generous with only five thousand.
Yeah. Council member King?
I just wanna say, I just had to go back to the email. Our original range was one oh six to one seventeen. He will be getting paid, I think, one twenty-five. And I can see us maybe extending the amount of time that he would be paid as city manager and clerk. If it's like two or three weeks for training, because as, as council member, who happened to have stated. We don't know who we are, we are going to hire, and we don't know how much experience they will have. I understand it will be additional training, be a massive theory, but being that. Our finances are not, you know, as we just heard, our finances are in stable condition, but they're not one hundred percent where. We would want them to be as it is. I do, I support the five thousand dollars towards the purchase of a new home. Absolutely one hundred percent, but I, I don't support the same.
Uh, so what I'll add is that I think we have to also recognize that we are looking at it because this person is internal. But it is not typically the city manager's job to, to, to train our city clerk, right? That's not typically how that looks. It just so happens that our city clerk became our city manager. Um, and I don't, I don't know if it'll be two to three weeks, I've never been a clerk. But also, I think the way that we wrote our job description, there are additional duties than a typical city clerk role. Within this city because of how we structured it. And so I wanna keep that in mind too, and think about, about that. Um, the one twenty-five number is above because we altered the, the range later to attract. Talent, more, more applicants. And so that original number was below market value to begin with for anyone. Um, to do this job. Uh, so just wanted to name that. Uh, councilor Morrison, you guys hearing?
Yes.
Uh, I guess I have a question of what, who would trade the clerk typically? Like, if we don't have, if the clerk leaves, who would actually do that? I'm, I'm just, you know, in my mind, I think about, in, in the contract, it talks about, you know, there's these different roles. Um, and different things to expect. And so. Yeah, so who would typically do that? Obviously, when things go well, the outgoing clerk might have some overlap or something like that. But when you don't have that possibility, then how about all? And then, um, and then maybe I also think, uh, council member King's suggestion, which is. If part of this is because the person who was cur, is currently in that role of clerk. Would have that carryover, they would still then earn their wage um in that position. And that time would be used to train the new person, and that feels like um maybe an appropriate adjustment.
Mr. Barr?
Historically, uh, generally when a clerk would leave, and we get a new clerk. A lot of times deputy clerk would be elevated to that position. If not, we, if we had a deputy clerk, that would be the train, generally the training person for that. That's, that's such an unusual.
Yeah, we're. Yeah, it's a weird situation.
We've had a resignation of any acting city clerk. We have the deputy clerk that was hired a month and a half. Um, so that, that still keeps the bridge on, on Andrew to leave the firm and bring him back. Acknowledge that, so that the pay increase was. Forget me, but I forgot the number for, for the interim or your functioning in full force. How much is that on?
I don't know, it was my, it was a bar.
The con, the contract provides that, well, Mr. Helanga is acting as city manager and city clerk at two hundred and forty. When we hire a city clerk, it goes down to one hundred and forty-five.
And so that's sixty thousand dollars a year over.
Well, it's, it's not, this is not training, this is.
But I'm just, I'm just trying to, to understand, you know, there's that money for that amount of time. Um, the difference between keeping that where it is and the five thousand dollars. And I'm not trying to think one dime, it's, I was just trying to understand. How much we were willing to give Andrew on a monthly basis to do that job?
So, I, you know, just a couple, you know, little calculation here. If we do it based on the additional amount and not the full salary, right? Per month, that's an extra fifteen hundred dollars. If we're going on forty hour a week. Pay sale, right, if I'm doing that correctly.
So essentially, this five thousand dollar bonus is, is equivalent with the three months of, of.
Of doing the whole job.
Doing the whole job.
I guess I just have one more. I don't know if there's a question in for statement, but I know for one reason that. I, I, as, as the council stated, that Mr. Helanga was such a valuable. Asset for the city manager is because he, as a clerk, worked closely, closely with the city manager. And so, I think overall with the outgoing city manager, she was a former clerk. And she worked closely with Andrew. And I think just on an everyday basis. They're gonna be working together and additional training probably will happen throughout that process. Because we know sometimes trying to actually never end.
Yeah, Mayor Forten.
Um, I take exception to the example. Um, I don't think that, that really relationship was formed on part of them. Um, and so. You know, I, I can appreciate, in a theoretical sense, but I would, I don't think that was actually, uh. I don't know where this statement came from, but we were saying, you know, who said that it was because the, the close relationship. And, but, um, my understanding of that is very different. You know, and so, you know, in, in actuality, I think, uh, Mr. Ling has been functioning. Over those roles for, uh, that's considerable. Uh, because I locate this five thousand dollars as. It's small price for the amount and effort that, uh, Mr. Ling has over the last, um. Many months, uh, since he assumed the role of the interim manager, um. And beyond that, so I definitely won't support, uh, taking that out. I think he deserves that.
Um, well, based on the contract I presented, I think it's a very reasonable, um, contract, um, that we have in front of us. Um, I do think that the additional things listed, the bonus, the whole incentive, I think. Um, are good additions, I think, looking around the area for executive level talent. Um, we know what that search process was like. Uh, I think we also know, and we can understand that we definitely are not, um, have top tier salaries. Um, in the city, right? So we're not, you don't have the budget to sustain, um. A higher salary, which we should, you know, likely would want to be, um. Thanks someone for this position to run this organization, um, in this community. So, um, I think as presented the contract as well, and I will not be able to support any, uh, removal of that.
Um, I think, I think what I would add is very similar, and I just want to bring us back to thinking about when we talk about. Um, the quality of folks that we have within the city as well as morale. We ask our staff to go above and beyond what we see, uh, in other communities that have much larger teams. And much larger departments and more people to do work. And even in this particular, at this particular time, um, we have someone who is functioning in two complete full roles. That could have actually asked for more to do both of those, could have asked for more, um, in terms of a better salary. And out of sheer commitment to this community is, you know, very reasonable. And I think this contract is very reasonable, and, um, our city manager has been amenable to many of the, the other changes in terms of training. Everything that we're asking, um, one person to do. So I also cannot support, um, this amendment, but we can go ahead and vote if there's no further comment. So this is a vote.
I don't have any, uh, comments up there.
Yeah, this is your amendment, on your amendment. Please follow.
Councilmember Tusin?
No.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
No.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wolfaxen?
No.
Mayor Brown?
No.
Councilmember Sweet?
No.
Motion fails in two yes, five nos.
So we are back to the resolution for the contract. Um, presented with, we have taken out the twenty-four. Hours, um, to complete the ICMA program, um, which is forty plus hours a year. Um, what further discussion or questions do we have about the contract? Mayor approach.
Um, my question is about the, uh, I think, uh, section three, went to the point of termination severance. Um, having gone through this twice, I can hear as our council. In, uh, section E three, uh, you know, there's this rated severance package. Um, you know, depending on the, the time of service, uh, duration of service. And I'm, I'm curious of where this one comes from. Um, and having seen two, two managers leave and those severances, uh, being paid out, um. I have objections to that. Um, you know, especially the last one, number three, if it did your three years and then we say them, you know, this is the. An ad will employment, um, which, uh, at the same time, that, that. Is not something that I particularly care for. Uh, seeing that in one place and then having, having, you know, a hundred and fifty days of salary, um, because of termination.
This, uh, goes back to several contracts before, and the numbers have changed. But the, the contract as drafted by labor council, the intent was, this is the, it is the rental law.
Thank you, Mr. Hulenga.
I can certainly appreciate that, um, and we, as I said, I've, I've seen two people leave. Um, and we were very cautionary about not, uh, inserting a lawsuit, but I guess the rest of the contract. Has language in there for, for when, uh, determinations or costs is appropriate. And when termination, turn termination without cost is appropriate. And in giving those things, uh, past experience, um. With those clauses in there ahead of that, I, I don't see that this is, it's serving the purpose of, of, uh, preventing a lawsuit. Um, you know, we, we have cause or we don't have cause, we have the ability to fire them regardless of having this as a, as a safety net seems. You know, maybe I'm just, you know, the, the last part, you know, the first few parts, I'm like, you know, I, I don't have any issue with that. But when it comes to paying somebody a hundred and fifty days, when we've gotten rid of them, I mean, you know. Yeah, the lawsuit is gonna be much more expensive than that, but we've paid this out twice to people that. In my opinion, didn't deserve it. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I think that is, that is last. So I would, I would, uh, make an amendment to just remove, uh, E three from it, and if it was E one.
There's a motion?
This would be paragraph three E.
And then number three?
And then number three. I'm actually okay with that.
So there's a motion, is there support?
Support.
Remove and supported. Further discussion on the removal of section three E, number three. Councilmember Simmons?
So just, just for quick, so you're saying that you're applying with the severance for less than two years? But you're saying for over, it would be, if you're looking at two, that would just continue. For each year of service.
I see.
So let's just, um. There's that three, sub E, sub three.
Correct.
Right. That's, that's what the vote.
This, this just remove that and then make this beyond two years, be it a hundred and fifty.
This is for fun. Is that a tip, that's difficult for severance? Four months? Like a quarter, a quarter of a year is the typical severance?
Yeah, sorry, it was different.
And, and I guess this is saying that depending on years of employment as well, so I mean.
Yeah, I know in other places where I've seen severance, been maybe three, three months. I mean, I just don't, I'm, I guess my question is, how, why it would go to me? I'm, I'm trying to see a question of the long, of why it would necessarily go up. Because of length of time, one year, one year to two years is not that much of a jump in my mind. Also, um, but then, uh, if this is, so this is without cause. I don't know, I'm trying to just test this out in my brain, and, and I'm also trying to understand, like, you know, this. This step, this graduated, these graduated steps, um. And what again feels, you know, fair, but also not kind of hamstringing the city. And so. Yeah, so maybe, maybe I am saying, uh, that, but I, I don't, I don't know. So, Mr. Hulenga.
I wonder if we take it one night.
I was gonna say that, that item on the floor right now is to remove three E, subsection three.
Right, right.
Which is the hundred and fifty days.
Right.
So we'd like to vote on that, and then if you have anything else you'd like to amend, that we can bring that in for that. Councilmember McLean?
Madam, mine is simply a technical question here. If we remove three, and I think we should also be adding. Language in there that's terminated during the second year of, or being on, if it's not the spirit of the, well, it's being offered.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, you're from there and then the support. Yeah.
Actually, who we have terminated during the second year or subsequent year of employment.
Okay. All right. Further discussion on this current amendment. The none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wolfaxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tusin?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, further discussion. Further discussion on the contracts. On the ones, yeah, for that.
Uh, I just have a question about vacation sick time, twenty, twenty days of one month. Uh, uh, work time that's combined between vacations and sick, how does that line up with, uh? Union and, and others non-union. So it is.
Uh, that's pretty much in line with what I have now. I've been here nearly ten years, so it's fifteen days. And then you have, uh, personal time is just a normal sick leave, uh, that, that accumulates. So this would be an additional five days. So I think we'll go up to that next year.
Further questions or discussion? Being none, please call the roll on the amended contracts.
Member McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Wolfaxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tusin?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries advance.
Thank you. I just wanna say officially, welcome, city manager, Hulenga. I also wanna name that this is so uncomfortable for someone that to sit through and listen to. Um, and so I really appreciate your ability to respond and remain professional while we discuss and tear things apart up here. Uh, and so I, again, look forward to working with you. Thank you. Um, councilmember Sweet, you have our next resolution.
Number twenty twenty-four dash zero three three, resolved by the council of the city of Slaney. Whereas the Parks and Arts Commission has been tasked with providing recommendations to the council, the parks and recurring items. And whereas the city of Slaney owns a one acre parcel along Spring Street, between Catherine Street and Grove Road, directly adjacent to the Huron River. And whereas the Parks and Arts Commission recommends that this parcel be designated as a city park. Now therefore, we are resolved with the city of Slaney, city council designate this city own parcel as Huron Lake Park, as a move support.
The move and support it.
I think it's.
Thank you.
So this actually has been a, um, item of conversation on the Parks and Immigration Commission. Um, for two, potentially three years now, um, about this small section. Um, that recently had, uh, sorry, so small section along Spring Street. There is a map in the packet that indicates kind of the specifics of the parcel that, for discussion. Um, this is a highly trafficked area for, um, there's sufficient that happens there, there are. Uh, we also use it for the annual fall every day event as a takeout location. And there's no designation or anything to know that you are on public property. Uh, at all, the other side of the street there is the Engstrom, uh, old Ford plant. Um, and everything around it, other than Waterworks Park, which is the other side of the river from this parcel. Um, let them present like that, there, with some recent construction in the past two years. Uh, on Spring Street, there is now a small drive into that lot, removal of some train tracks. Old train tracks are removed, and there's a small curb cut to access. Um, basically, it's a dirt lot, um, with. Um, an area of view, it's a river that's not cool up to it, the whole parcel itself is a little bit larger, but the, for. The scope of this conversation and the part that's mainly accessible, um, without getting. You know, too far into some of the vegetation along the bank of the river there.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember McLean?
Madam Mayor, I think this question probably for the manager, um, when we designate something as a park. Does that carry with it any additional obligations, any, let's say ADA, I would assume signage, but.
It would have to, uh, follow the, the parks ordinance, which would be chapter seventy-eight. So if we, we are obliged or obligated to follow all those. Oh.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, as the manager, is any of those carrying any significant financial obligations to the city? Did you know?
Um, no, I do not believe so. Uh, they do not. Thank you.
Further questions or discussion about this? Mr. Hulenga?
Um, there used to be a provision that was, that's a mean, it's part plan, it has to be a more than people. Last charter changed it slightly, but a little bit since I've looked at that. Uh, I don't think that's still in part, in the process.
No, I, to his point, that was kind of part of this too, is designated it as a city park, would allow it to be more preserved for public access. Um, and, oh, sorry, your guys spoke.
Director Westler, so this, um, property was considered a protected land. Under provision of the charter, which enables planning commission to, uh, back in the nineteen ninety-seven. It was deserting certain areas as protected lands. Uh, as part of that motion, they did say all parks would be protected lands, but then also all city owned. Uh, river properties, um, would be essentially protected land. So that doesn't really change anything for this particular.
But it's all front of the river. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Mayor for that?
So the, the property directly, uh, upstream on river's left, um, is also city owned. Uh, basically, the east side of the river from.
This portion?
No, oh, sorry, this same side of the river, just going up the stream.
It, it is, I don't know how far it goes up, but.
Uh, to about where the border, the border slot pops up to grow.
It gets kind of narrow, I think, at the very.
Yeah. Space between the old rail easement and the river. It's really odd shaped parcel.
So that's city owned and therefore protected as well?
I am remembering an ambiguous resolution passed by planning commission more than twenty years ago. Um, the intent of that was to ensure that public access would be maintained.
Okay.
Mr. Hulenga?
I'm speaking about the property that's used as a recycling process or.
No, no, uh, that's on the other side for.
Further questions or discussion about this? Being none, please call the roll.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Wolfaxen?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tusin?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, you have our next resolution. Twenty twenty-four dash zero fifty-four, or you go?
Uh, resolution to approve the in our development for project agreement for interior surface replacement of the old pool. It is resolved by the council of the city of Slaney, that the city of Slaney, Michigan does hereby accept the terms of the grant fund agreement received. From the Michigan Department of Natural Resources titled interior surface replacement of the old pool. And agrees that one, to construct the project and provide such funds, services and materials as may be necessary to satisfy the terms of said agreement. Due to regulate the use of it.
Due to regulate the use of the facility constructed and reserved under this agreement, they're sure the use thereof by the public. Oh, yeah, I don't equal and reasonable. Uh, terms, uh, free to comply with any and all terms of said agreement, including all terms not specifically set forth in or were in portion of this resolution. And I certainly support.
Been moved and supported. Is there anyone?
I can just, this is just a grant for the research, see, or this was moved, castle's ready.
So any?
Um, just, uh, so the the Friendsborough Pool had, uh. Been working to to fundraise for this. Uh, they got this grant, they were not able to to act as the fiduciary in this because of the way the state raised the language. Um, and so we passed, uh, a previous resolution that would be a fiduciary, this is the the end of all that. And so the twenty two hundred thousand dollars, um. We had also committed in the budget last year to to give them some money for this, and it came down to twenty-five thousand or thirty-five thousand dollars. At initial for both seventy and so I think thirty-five. Uh, with that, the two hundred thousand that was granted in the thirty-five thousand that, uh, we had committed. Um, that allows them to, they have a contract with the contractors to do this. Um, it comes in and they're locked in for that pricing, so all of the prices of construction have gone up. Uh, since this was all started, uh, when they entered a contract, they locked in that price. So the two hundred thousand here and the thirty-five thousand dollars should be sufficient to do that. Um, and, you know, without, uh, any, a. Any need for for escalating that price, so let's lock up that price.
Councilmember Simmons.
A quick question, um, which is mainly about, um, yeah, timeline, if there's any anticipation of, um. So the pool needing to be closed, uh, during the season in order to be surfacing or if this will happen after this season.
So this has happened for the open, uh, the contractor they have with the, uh, the contractor, the contract. Okay. Uh, um, it stipulates that this is gonna be done, uh, before the season starts, so maybe somebody get that way who don't. Labor Day weekend and. Was that for the memorial? That's okay, that's a cold. Uh, on the more than the empty space of that. Be done. There's certainly a head of competition before that. Um, this, this, uh, arrangement here allows more fifty percent of that to be, um, given on Friday. So reimbursed contractor or situation, but it allowed for fifty percent to be. Uh, now that is advanced, um, it just has to be, uh, justified. To to the N R to give that money up, I think that would likely be in case that that had, otherwise that comes out of our budget. Um, and so they could get a hundred thousand dollars to commit and basically didn't, uh, so it's, you have to justify why that is. And it has to be, uh, essentially a project form. I think that, and the city had done this, has further projects.
Further questions or discussion on this item? The nun, please call the role.
Mayor Proton Wilcox.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember King, you have our next resolution.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero three five resolved by the council of the city of Slaney, where the park and commission has adopted thirty-nine law. Require re- every regular attendance and whereas Dylan of our region, a member of the body who has missed three complex in the meeting. And furthermore, it is all that Dylan of our even existing from the area family.
Support.
When movement supported. Uh, any acting from? Council or.
Uh, he has been, um, heavily absent from commission meetings, um, and has that been, um. Participating due to, uh, to that.
Thank you. Uh, who's called the role?
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcox.
Yes.
What carries in.
Thank you. Councilmember King, you have our next resolution.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero three six resolved by the council of the city of Slaney, whereas at phase one has been completed. At existing public service yard, number three onsite recognized environmental conditions that may affect indoor air quality. And where the existing buildings are in need of maintenance and repair, providing a potential window of opportunity to mitigate any indoor. Air quality issue and where is the A K T care list has prepared a proposal for landing phase two to study to assess, assess the indoor air quality. Of the buildings that were, that are were, or may regularly be occupied. Now therefore be resolved that the state of this plan, the approved of proposals on A K T for landing phase two environmental site that says, my four six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, I found. Work.
We just supported, I think, with sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty. Uh, Director Westler.
Um, this is just what it says on the ten. If you have any questions, let me know. I did include a five hundred page, there is one report. Some light readings.
Yeah. So our guide of seven hundred and eighty-six. Thank you.
Well, it's like with every enclosed, like that, just the ones that are structurally.
So this includes the buildings that are, may or will be regularly happening. So this is the office program. And with that being though, it, which is mechanics bay, the, uh, the wash bay.
For metal layers, so.
Yes, yeah. It doesn't include the salt farm, uh, it doesn't include the truckport. And it doesn't include the, uh, hole barn.
Just the name of those conferences.
Right, well, the whole barn is enclosed, but it has a dirt floor and people aren't regularly occupied. So you go in to get stuff and then you come back now.
Questions or? I was on, you can talk on this.
Yeah.
I know. I'm actually sitting very aligned tonight, so I can't really. So, Mayor Proton. Mayor Proton.
Um, why is this just limited to the your mind?
Um, because we want to get the results of the program and study before we do it in phase two to limit our hospital security. This, if you do a phase two without any idea of what you're gonna be putting where, you don't know what you're testing for and why. Because there's different sort of criteria that you have to test for, like residential and your commercial and or just sort of exposure that. So this is very limited until we figure out what we need and what we want in the future. Figure out more.
So that's just.
This is, this is phase one. All right. Councilmember Simmons.
Okay, um. So I'm trying to like find my notes in multiple places, but, um, so one question I have is so in the, just for information, it says that. This, um, discussion is, uh, under a threshold from when council would, um, be considering. This, so I just wanted to check what that threshold is, twenty-one thousand. So, thank you. Thanks for keeping us updated on this project. As you know, it's so of interest to so many people. Um, the other question that I have is.
Oh, that is.
Yeah.
Uh, so a question I have is, uh, so it talks about. I have, I put page sixteen, so I have to try to find that, but anyway, we talked about different possible contamination and I was just wondering, it talks about, I think. The different, like, uh, areas around the yard and that they told them it's been residential spaces. And I know, I think from what I was, as I was reading, it seemed that a lot of the conversation was whether there was concern from those. Properties onto G P S, like whether those could created some contamination, but I'm wondering whether there's concern about it going the opposite way at all.
That's not something I've asked our consultant about, and it's beyond my skill.
Um, okay, and then another question I have, uh. Okay, um, another question I have is, uh, so they talked about a phase two study from nineteen ninety-three, I think. Um, but I just wanted to know, one, like, how long are the different studies like last, or like, if I was looking at something in particular? So just like, what is the, um, how long is a study current? I guess.
So that. It depends on a lot of factors, but that particular phase two is looking for particular type of examination from the very particular source.
Hmm.
So the scope of this is.
And then, um. Oh, and then there's this other part, it it talked about, um. Uh, that's a special maybe, uh, so it says, um, would the onsite. Recognized environmental conditions be measure, let me see, would be, would they be measured if we weren't staying? So I think there's something where it said something like, um. Uh, certain things might happen if there was a different, there maybe for different outcomes and. And then it said, and then I was asking whether there's impact on something other than in term of air quality, but that might go to the question that was already asked. Nor the water homes. I'll try to, I could try to find where it was talking about the recognize the R E C conditions, um. What would you study or not, or what was considered not necessary to measure because we are staying long term?
So I think that goes to Mayor Proton's earlier question about why are we only looking at this specific set of these evidence? You must be aware of those, right? Not if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Okay, yeah, I'll try to see if I can find it in here. I can't seem to make my notes in this document, so now I'm probably going to multiple spots. So let me see if I can find the part I was talking about. Yeah, please.
There's been some, there's been lots of chatter, obviously. Uh, alluded to that, um, what is the legal requirement for doing a phase two at this point? Um, the question of if we're not selling it, if we're, you know, people have brought up that, um. You know, if you're, some people have objected to having the phase one. And I thought that was interesting, you know, it's like, you know, like not selling the property, they they seem to think that. Uh, when you do sell the property, if they haven't done phase one, then it's not necessarily required unless the the person who, uh, asked them. So I, so I mean, it gives some clarification for that.
So there are legal requirements, there are contractual requirements, and then there are the common sense requirements. If we are going to be disturbing soil and what we believe may be a contaminated site, then. I believe a council, of course, may have a different policy direction. And please feel free to direct me otherwise. It makes sense to see what we may be disturbing. Um, it is my understanding that is part of what is called a do care. But please correct me if I'm wrong. Katie's actually probably the expert on, on this, in the room, at least.
And then Mr. Barr raises his hand too, so.
Well, there's another requirement also, which is the liability question. If something happens and you haven't done the study and there's a bad result, you can be not liable.
And that would arise from.
Like black lung disease or.
Sure, so this is, this is. And my, my question is on a level, asking for clarification in the public.
But specifically why we're testing the indoor air quality if it's regularly occupied.
Well, and in general, why we're proceeding with the phase one and the phase two when lots of folks think that this was absolutely not necessary and. Um, a waste of our time. You're answering my question here to do care for our own employees. This is a contaminated site historically before we bought it. It was contaminated. We bought it, it's contaminated, but the laws of time when we purchased it. Did not come into effect that we had recourse against it versus to be bought before, we did not exercise that option.
Well, then if you'll read the the R E Cs of them, are do not comfortable for our ownership.
Right. And so, uh, just putting it out there to have that stated in a public meeting. This is do care for people that have had that for future development of this and the people that will inhabit that. And the people who will be seeing that development to understand what exactly we're looking for in here. And this informs how we go forward with the programming on this site in terms of. Designing alternative buildings for, uh, for the purpose of G P S. You get that.
Thank you. Uh, further comments, questions or discussion on this item? It's not too much, Jenny.
Oh, I said one to close, uh, if I. Thank you for bringing this to us. Uh, I read the article about the details behind that, and second, I just wanna say that I appreciate how thorough A K T is, this report is like. They've covered anything and everything that I could private questions on, so I appreciate that they're, like, I have a lot of trust and faith in them to do a very thorough process. Not that I didn't before, but, um, it's just, they're very detailed, I guess.
I don't believe we very often, very face ones to you, but we saw the opportunity.
Uh, burning comments, questions, anything else? Who counts?
I can see we're always getting some.
Yeah, no, I don't. Not at this time.
All right. Thank you, Director Westler. If there are no further questions, please call the role.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Motion carries in.
Thank you. All right, now we are at the first of many discussions. Um, the first discussion regarding agenda items submission protocol, and I will hand this to whomever added it to the agenda.
So. Yes, so this is mainly just a clarification of the protocol that we had. Um, which, as it says now, that, um. Discuss items for the agenda will be submitted by one P M on Friday, which we. Passed, I don't know, not that long. And so I brought this forward as a question because during our last meeting, um, Mayor Brown added something. Um. I don't, I can't remember now, it was the day before the day of council, um. To add a proclamation, which I agree with the proclamation, but my question is about the process. And language for the general public, so if, um. If, if it is the case that the mayor, and I also had a question about whether the city manager also can add things to our agenda outside of that time. Then I think we should state that clearly, um, so that it's not confusing for people when that happens. Um. So that's, I I guess that's my basic, that's my basic thing to say on that.
Um, I guess I'll start and then I think maybe Mr. Barr or manager, Colingo, can chime in. So by charter, the mayor and the city manager create the agenda. But also, the mayor is not the only person who can add things whenever. Realistically, we came up with this, um, item as a body for rules for us to follow, but by charter, two members of council could add. Something to the then at any time, honestly, we just created rules for ourselves so that we would have a protocol and have something to to follow. Again, I think when I responded back to the email that you sent inquiring about this, I stated that. What I added, you only had one meeting in February, this is not to be common practice, and we typically don't only have one meeting a month, and so. The proclamation was not contentious, it was not voting. It was a boilerplate language from previous years updated with what the theme for the year was, so it wasn't, um, anything that we had to deliberate on or vote on, so. It felt pertinent to do that, so we did miss the opportunity to celebrate Black History Month in February. Um, it, I I don't have a problem, I think, Mr. Barr, maybe you can speak too, we can add language to say that. Council is allowed to add things whenever, but I mean, the. Council is allowed to add things whenever, but I mean, the we came with a rule just to make sure that we. Had some type of protocol, or particularly, we had some contentious issues coming up that were to be voted on, but Mr. Bar, you can speak to that.
Since I've been city attorney, it's been my impression and my uh observation that council hates surprises. And so the rule has always been, they don't wanna have things added to the agenda at the last minute, so they don't have the time to. Study the prepare for for the meeting, and so that's generally been, things have to be submitted on Friday. Uh that's not in the charter, there is a provision in the charter. And it says for ordinances, but council considers all rules, that has been the rule since I for a long, long time. However, with any rule, occasionally there's an emergency that comes up, or there's some question. Some idea, some item that has been answered now. And so the council has always given the mayor discretion, in that case, to allow things to be put on at the last minute. Uh there's never been a situation, uh and and that's been the rule since I since I remember, the mayor can do it. And it it has to be, it should be something that's special and needs immediate attention, otherwise. The rule has been that there's no one can put something on at the last minute if it's to have it up. That answers the question.
Thank you, so um for clarity too, but I know even with the way we have it now, things can be added during the meeting up. Obviously, or at the beginning of the meeting, but just so I'm I'm hearing what you're saying, which is that. By per the charter, you're saying by the charter, how things can be added, and so. Uh two council members could also add after that date for the charter, um but that this. This uh kind of protocol that we put forward for ourselves is more for. Just our, like, I guess, reestablishing that as the way that we would like to practice in general. And that there would be uh extenuating circumstances that would make that different. And so I, that's fine with me, I guess it was to me, it kind of like, when we kind of went through it to put it together and, you know. I um and the way I would think about even the situation. That to my mind, kind of might have brought it forward, I think it might have also fallen with the business of being. Extenuating in different circumstances as well. Um so. I'm fine with that being um, you know, just making sure that it's clear for folks and then. Because I was thinking about it as being part of for the public more in terms of when um, you know, when things change. Um when they don't necessarily have the updated information, we have the most updated information, so. Um that is fine with me, if we are moving from that understanding, and as long as we're, we just are consistent.
And I just wanna add that originally, when we had this discussion via email, what I stated was. Was that, that that this was not typical, we only have one meeting a month, so that was an extenuating circumstance, and anything else. I'm gonna practice that we put forward as a rule for content. So just to verify that too, that that was, you know, shared. Any further discussion on this?
So I guess the the question is, I know I brought, I put things on the at the time of agenda approval. Uh and that is not set forth in the charter, and that's not set forth in any rules that we've gotten. What is the mechanism? Say that way again, so I would put things on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. But if not, one of our on Friday, but on Tuesday, I'd set the fire, I could think of the agenda, and I would hope I was able to do that. And so that that ability to do that is is presented where? That's not in the charter, that's not uh in our rules or our guidelines, I'll call them.
Here's, here's what the charter says. An ordinance may be introduced by any member of council at any regular or special meeting council. Unintroduced introduction, the city clerk shall distribute a copy, so the charter says. For ordinances, any member can bring it up at any meeting. And then there's a process that doesn't get considered until a later meeting. The charter also says, and pretty comfortably, the rules of the chief. And it kind of, I said, uh I felt recently, there hasn't really been a written rule on this. There was an unwritten rule that you don't put things on the agenda late on Friday, I moved this chart right down the meeting, but. Counselor can always give a member permission to do something if it's coming up at that time. And so it's a policy question for check counsel, run a smooth meeting, how do you want the things to come to you? And in the past, it's always been they want time to consider it before it comes on the table, but you're to change that.
Uh just one last clarification on this is when you add something at the beginning of an agenda, at the beginning of the meeting. Do you need to have two council members in order to do so?
I believe it's a part of Robert's Rules of Order that the agenda could be amended at the time of approval.
Right, the two member item. Uh the theory of that is, for instance, if somebody comes to my office and wants me to do a lot of work on it. I'll ask them, they have another council member permission, and I don't wanna waste a lot of time, and if somebody comes to the table and I have it, it's second.
Are there any special?
Or a clarification in there, so I think what the manager is is saying in response to Mayor Protown. It's in fact, it takes a majority vote. To bring, that's that's the difference, early it's two, but in the meeting itself, it's a majority vote.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so we will close this discussion and move on to the selection of candidates to interview for City Clerk.
Council, I did put that each new space in. Producted um. Resumes, I mean, if this is really up to your council, how it would like to select candidates to interview, but. I thought council could decide on how many individuals they would like to interview, and then they each have that amount of votes. So you select four people, like each council member gets four votes, but really, I'm however the council likes to do this. I was suggesting that council determine the amount of applicants that they would like to to interview. And then for selecting a candidate, each council member has that many budgets, and select four candidates, you get four votes. And then it's just the top, the top, how many you decide to go to discuss with that. If that makes sense. But again, this is the way we have it.
Yeah, thanks for that, uh suggested, I was trying to think about how we might do this, um. One thought that I was, I had, um especially because of the number of them. I was thinking about uh if we could do like. Um as we go through, kind of have consensus, like making that, we would need to have. I'm just trying to think about how to narrow it down a little bit, and then we get a sense, so like, I have an idea of like, okay. In my mind, how many people I would wanna interview, but I also could see reason, like with discussion. To maybe extend that to a different number. Um and so. I was thinking about whether we went through them and just get a, like a sense of whether. Um candidates that had, let's say, like four or more people would support interviewing, then we could narrow down. We might talk about more to really clarify and then come to a number that we would want to interview. Um. So, yeah, that's something I was gonna put forward.
So one suggestion is to go through each, either consensus lies around. Folks who want to report to like this, like mid-round, and then discuss who ultimately you wanna bring back for interview. Are there, are there like, they?
Uh going through the applications, um looking at um. They, I think, looking at a baseline of those that have um. One served in municipal government, um but two had election experience or had filled the role in. Uh a clerk's office or clerk department in another community, um I think there were um. Small handful of candidates that fulfilled um those requirements, um that I think. If we use that as a starting point, may come to the top of the list, and then see if there's others that maybe are that within that group. That we'd like to consider as well, just my thoughts.
Well, thank you. Another suggestion, so we can make a decision on how to work on this, anything else?
I would agree with that.
Okay, so the process, who votes up to the top based on said experience? And then any others that you wanna add in, Councilmember Simmons is asking, i- if we go through each of them, see who we want to. Talk about, and then make a final decision from that group. So, council, it's our will to decide how we do this, so we have to make a choice, how would we like to do? Support one way over the other, I mean, you all, you can't tell.
That's man, I guess if you could explain, I, because I'm like, I'm looking at these, there's basically, I don't know. I think four, three, four, maybe five, where. Uh in terms of thinking about those qualifiers, and there's some that. There's obviously variation in terms of that, or there's timeline, so really, there'd be three people, if if we're just based on. You know, thinking about like long-term, like longer-term experience in role. Um, you know.
I think we're probably talking about some of the same, I had four in front of me, but I think that realm, I think we're talking about some of the same.
So, yeah, so then I'm thinking, um. But, okay, so I guess how would you that I did, so would you just say like this number, I'm just trying to think of like. Is it that, be like, let's call it out, this person here, like, yeah, you know, just trying to think of like.
So I think if we are looking at this, um there are. Less than a handful that actually meet the criteria that I think we want. Um or appear to meet the criteria, so maybe we start with those, and then we go back to the council, if there's any folks that we have not. Or that people felt very strongly that we should also include. Um I think there are three to four, in my opinion, from my review, that rise to the top, if we start with those, I think we all kind of in agreement. With that, and call the letters, um just see if we agree. Okay, I'll start. And then you can add, um letter E.
Agree, agreed, agreed.
All right.
Yes.
Letter F.
Agreed, yes.
Are you just listing them on the, are are we, these are all the ones?
No, no, just just to talk, to put to the side to consider. So. F, okay. K. N.
Yes, yes.
Okay, are there others, are there others in the pile that folks wanted to to discuss further to add to that list?
I would add D.
I had D as well, it's on my list. Yeah, I had D on my list as well.
Okay. I mean, I mean, you know, there's. But you said, E, this I made sure. Had E, F. K.
Yep.
N.
Yep.
And then you just added D. Thank you. Are there any others in the pile? From A through Q, B. Can we want to discuss, or are we good with these five to discuss?
Yeah, there were some other ones that I thought, you know, could be interesting, but those were definitely mine.
Okay, so we have five in front of us now that have risen. Based on qualifications, experience, the things that we are looking for. Um now we decide how many are we gonna interview. Out of this.
A question I have, um in terms of thinking about how many people to interview, is the thing about how long. I think, you know, when we did it for city manager, it was an hour, and I'm wondering whether we would expect it to be the same amount of time or could be. A shorter amount of times, which might allow us to interview more people.
Um so maybe this is a good, so I received questions from. Including myself, five of seven of us. Um but the plan was to have at least two questions per council member, um so that's about fourteen questions. So if we are going to do that, as we originally laid out, we probably would like to leave the hour. Because I mean, for most of our interviews, you you don't know how, unless we give a time limit to say, you have forty-five seconds or sixty seconds to answer. You know what I mean, to answer the question, we don't know how someone will answer the questions that we are going to ask. Um and I would hate to whittle it down to like thirty minutes, and then folks can't, we don't get to even half of them, right? So it depends on what we want up.
We still have on cap, excuse me, we still have on cap, we got twenty persons this month at six P M for the clerk.
Yes, we have, we have the date. Yeah.
Uh Mayor.
Yes.
Can I ask, is it, the questions that you received, is it the case that you have fourteen really different questions, or? Or could they be narrowed down to ten? I'm happy to ask only one.
We do have about ten, from what I've received. Um that some of them were able to be removed because they were duplicates, um that folks said, so there's about ten right now.
That that would be a way to. A shorter period of time, maybe if we don't have as many questions.
Yeah, that's also, if everyone is in agreement, that those who did not submit questions won't submit them, because we already have ten right now. So.
And we see the, through the ten, I uh. Well, I guess some of them kind of wait, so that's why I didn't pump it out.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So, I don't wanna read the questions out, because. So, uh I will, I will send them to you. I'll send them, um there was one, you know, that I got late, so I wasn't able to compile and get them out before now. Um but I can send them out, but there's about ten, I can say. And that are different questions.
Yes, do you feel like the questions have a touch happening?
I think that they they do cover a lot, um in terms of short-term, long-term, like, you know. Skills, experience, it it covers it all, um I I would say so.
So you wanna like cut that to forty-five minute interviews, I mean, we can get into the weeds once if you like. I was just thinking like, yeah, comes, you know, in terms of us, we're deciding how many, so right now, we're talking about five candidates, so. If we want to interview on five, or if we wanna have fewer, we wanna interview fewer than five. I was just thinking that would help me decide if we knew that they weren't gonna be to our, cause then it's like, if we start at six. When is the last interview, not only for when we're here, but like, just like a person coming in to interview. So that's part of what I was thinking about, so if we are, if we cut down the time, then you know what that might give us.
Yeah, I'm open to what you all want to do, I will say, for me, I would. Start, I would only like to interview four of these people, myself, um so I'm open to what you all, again, have to say.
I definitely think for the good number, especially considering what happened in the finish of it, we will be starting at six. Of our last interview, we will be at ten P M.
Yeah. For some, not even for us, I mean, for someone interviewing. I don't, I don't know how I feel about that, so. But we have to make a decision, and I can't make it for all of us, so I'm I'm gonna keep putting it back out, so we have to make a decision. Um, personally, like I said, I see four here that I could interview, but I could interview three, I mean, it's up to all of council make that.
Ah, again, I would say we're not go no more than four, just because we don't wanna be interviewing someone at eleven P M.
Yeah, we we want. Can we, um, see where, which, maybe if we start with that three and then feel like we have to extend to four? I mean, I, yeah.
Oh, okay, so you need to go back through these and see.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can see which top three. Or even we have, um.
I'd be happy to drop, uh, the.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the one, that's the one that I would drop first. Uh, is there another that, I don't look at that, is there another that folks would be okay with not interviewing from the four remaining? I would say if we're, if we're saying based on experience, um, then I would say. Uh, E, K, and N, um, have the most, have the most experience.
I, I agree, I have my number one, I have my number one, two, three, and that is E, K.
Um, I agree with those, I still would like to interview.
I look at E and F and I, uh, the term is different, um, but not seen every, I mean, that. Uh, neither one has run elections. There's, you know, the the length of time that.
So I would say the reason why I said four originally is because I think E and F were very similarly situated to me in terms of like the time. Um, but. Again, that's about, so is there, what what are, what are we doing?
Be in support of interviewing four people.
I was just, I mean, I don't know, in terms of length of time, so we have, uh. We're looking at one that started from April last year to January of this year. So I don't see those necessarily as the same length of time, and then also in terms of, in addition to that, before they were deputy clerk also. The same municipality from two thousand eighteen up until the time when they were in that position, so I consider the play. And with for the township for each. I'm still just saying in terms of like, when you think about like leadership experience and like, you know, gaining. When I think about the experience, I'm also think, so time within a municipality and thinking about, you know. Gain leadership within roles. So I add that as well, so there's that twenty-three, but and then before that, May two thousand eighteen. And within that one also was an election in twenty twenty-two. So there is, so I just, I I do see that as a difference in in experience, um. In terms of municipal experience and, um, some of the experience, for instance, in F, there's some experience. That, uh. In terms of legal clerking, which I saw D have, you know, which is one of the reasons that that stood out. But that was also longer period of time and more specific and some other things, which is why. Um, I originally had D, so there's, there's a lot of different experience that D has, an interest in education. That I actually think would play well in this role, but if we're looking specifically at. Experience in terms of bringing people forward, then that would be how I would determine that. So. Back to the question. And, are we gonna interview N?
Yes, yes.
Can I have a member?
Yes.
Yes. K.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
F.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. He, yes.
Okay, so that's. E.
Yeah, yeah.
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 Okay, so let's say we're interviewing four people. Um, at forty-five minutes. That sounds good to me, forty-five minutes sound fair for both.
You wanna cap it, we wanna cap it at the ten, but whatever, ten questions, we determine.
So that was the question I asked, if we're gonna do that, then we're gonna report what I've already received.
I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
If you think that.
Yes, I will, I will, I will send it out. I need to add the last email I got to that list.
I'd be happy to refer to you, Adam Mayor, to weed those out, or if they, if you think there's duplication.
So I've already done that, I got one extra email, um, yesterday. And so I'm gonna add those questions in, and that will give us our tandem, and I'll send that out to you. Okay, so, city manager. The date that we have scheduled for interviews?
Uh, we have, uh, March twenty-first, beginning at six P M.
All right, so on March twenty-first at six P M, we're gonna be interviewing four candidates at forty-five minute interview roles. Ten questions. Everybody all right?
Will they have like six, seven, eight, or?
Yeah, that would.
Yeah. Whatever, yeah, okay.
Cool, it'll be spelled out on the agenda, I have a H R contact tomorrow.
All right. Anyway, so we'll have H R to post the details on that, so we'll have to figure out times up here right now, but we'll be interviewing four candidates on March twenty-first. Very excited, happy to do so, so we can keep moving this process forward, I think everybody, um, for working through this, okay. Next. Oh, no, we got, we got some more things. Next, we have discussion regarding unarmed emergency response team, I will, again, I guess. Ever added this to the agenda, I believe was.
So, in a previous meeting, we had a presentation by C B S. For, uh. About how the, to factor back, um. History of this is that for many years, we've had on our goals and in the budget, uh, uh, a position. Trying to have a, a non police response number. Um, and and for other reasons, but, um. The history was, we we put this in the budget, uh, there wasn't some budget for salary, it was housed within the police department. Um, it went out, uh, there's a job description that was put out, uh, we didn't get the response we wanted. And, uh, it kind of, it sat. And so it's been many years that the the goal was to have an unarmed response, um, earlier. This year, or later last year, uh, we had a presentation, um. From CBS about how this could be accomplished by a nonprofit, um, that's, uh, has received grants. Um, to to do exactly this, um, parallel to this, the city of Ann Arbor. Uh, had put out the same thing and and had a, a request with proposals. Um, CBS, but they only responded to that at that time, the city of Ann Arbor decided to, uh, to hold off on that. Um, they engaged P S C, uh. Public sector consultants as, uh, to do some community engagement and surveys, get that information back and. And look at how they wanted to do it, so they they took a pause, they they got public input. Um, the results of that came out with the, uh, an R R P that came out March first, now that included the packet.
That's not quite, the timeline is flipped. Well, the P S C was, um, brought on before the original R R P went out. Original R R P is based on what came out of that public input. So this, the cancellation was not in relation to the.
And anyway, they have an R R P, they changed the way they got that, I've included it here for discussion, but but mostly keep us moving on it. We've been saving this for many years, this is something we wanna have in place, the the tactic we took before, uh. Didn't come to fruition, um, and so we posted on the, uh, the, the, the discussion on whether this was a way. For our, for this, with this.
Um, so in addition, so in terms of understanding what was what also happening, so this version is the original one. Original R R P, and there'll be some things that like, I I I wouldn't say like, we should just like copy and paste. I think there's some changes that I would want to put into, um, this process. Uh, looking at the one that came out, um, the second one that came out on March first from Ann Arbor. I don't agree with most of that one, um, in part because I don't find it to be evidence-based. Um, in terms of expectation, in terms of how this these programs work, um. Et cetera, and so, um, this is just so that we wouldn't have to, so that I wanted to have some things for us to kind of see. Like what kind of things are included and to think about what, um. You know, what things we would want to prioritize, um, and to think about, um. What that would look like, and so I know I'm most interested, and I don't know how different, um, outcomes. But I, um, you know, I'm a big fan of work group, um, and also wanting to talk about process. Like what, what kind of, what our process might be for, um, moving this forward, um. And. Yeah, so. Save for now.
So there's two, so there's the original one that that Ann Arbor City put out, the the packet, right, and then you said there's an additional one that they just released like five days ago this month?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I have some stuff eventually, but I don't know about that.
But the general question is, is this a reasonable way to move forward, certainly there will be changes as, uh, as it stated, um. Having an R R P, deciding on this process, having a working group to do this. When we tried to do it as just hiring a social worker in the past, that that came up short, and we all had prayed that was, that was not gonna be. The way to solve this. Um, clearly, uh, in presentation and in then later conversation. Uh, you know, there has to be a very clear understanding with, uh, with the police department in terms of. How that interaction looks, what the boundaries are at the agency, um, and when, uh, what's a collaboration. Uh, so that, that there is no ambiguity and people calling into this have, uh, have a clear understanding. When to, uh, to call them, um, and in the presentation, it's clear that they had. Even had, uh, had discussions with the dispatch and how they could do that, whether it's at the lumber, um. Uh, and I think that's, that was the idea that that was made a lot of sense. Um, but it would all, it would definitely involve, uh, conversations with the chief, uh, in terms of how this, how this worked. And, uh, you know, do any of that, so there's no.
Do we have any insight as to why Ann Arbor may have canceled their first and will be issued a new lead, like? That part of it?
I mean, um, yes, and probably there's more than one, right? There's so, there's things that they put out publicly, which a lot of them is actually not based on what is in the R R P. So there's things that they put out publicly, there's things that have come up in conversation, um. That have happened in the the public meetings, um, and there's things that have come out from. Um, conversations that both, um, uh, CBS, care based safety. And supporters were able to gather from some communications with them. Um, and so. Uh, some of those things were things like, um, wanting them to be twenty-four seven and cover the whole city. Which is one of the things that I said is not evidence-based for these programs, um. The city's not even providing long-term funding yet, um, so, um, so that was one of the things that came out of that. Um, there is also concern, there was also saying that, um. That care-based safety was going to be responding to calls that involve firearms, which is very much. Not at all, that's not in any of their materials, and that goes against what they put forward over and over. But that was one of the things that came out, um, and, um. Uh, yeah, and then basically, I think there was a a conversation about just saying that the, um. Uh, ultimately, they said that the R R P that they put out. Wasn't like, they didn't like the R P they put out. You know, I I don't know how to say it, I'm like, I'm trying really hard to be like, you know. But basically, they were like, the R P they put out was based on the, um, community input. And things that they got from D S D and from the process up to that point, stuff that they put out. And then they determined that that wasn't actually the R P they wanted to have put out. The R P that they put out stands, so I did look at it, the reason I I was kind of like, ooh, like a lot of issues with it is because not so. It does have that requirement about, um, you know, they want to have, uh, full, like, the, um. The group to be a hundred percent dedicated in Ann Arbor, um, and, um. To, uh, be twenty-four seven for the full city within things of twelve months. Um, which is an incredible ramp up of staffing, as we probably understand. Um, and they also, um, in there, they also have very, very. What I would say, very narrow parameters for response. And so, and then they have a number of, I guess we'll call them scenarios, I think there's. I don't know, it was say like ten or twelve, like scenarios that they have in there, um, to. To then say, would you respond to this, or would you, uh, basically call the police or C M H? Which the question is, we already have the police and C M H response. And so how would this be different if basically for almost anything besides, like. A neighbor dispute about a fence line and a lost, um, pet. Like, if those are the only things that the crisis response can respond to without calling the police and C M H, then it's really not a benefit add. If I'm, in my mind, it doesn't really add services, um, or what people would would use, um. And I'm trying to remember any of the other things that like really stood out, um, in terms of when I was in the R R P side by side. Uh, but those are some things that definitely for me, I was like, ooh, like, I believe that this work should be based on what is the best practice and what's happening. You know, um, in conversations actually that, uh, you could have with anybody that's been doing this work around the country. Um, I don't think we should go against those tenants, because otherwise, what's the point of asking people with experience to help support? Um, so that would be why those, some of those changes to me kind of go against those things. Um, but it's unclear to me kind of where they're gonna go with that, and if they're ever gonna get any responses. To this new R R P, um, will be, you know. That's still to be determined, that I think the R P, I think they're supposed to. Uh, in April, I think, but we can, we can look at the, to get those.
Just uh kind of putting that aside, I'm just just curious. What is the the price range that Ann Arbor is looking for in terms of this service? And Ann Arbor is a larger city, is there potential for a regional partnership to implement this program? And I'm all for like having a workshop and trying to trying to figure this out for the city of Ipsilanti and just. Some of that busy Ann Arbor might not be in in our ballpark.
For sure, so um for that, so one, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense that as this grows. That there would likely be regional, like I think that that actually makes a lot of sense. The way from my reading of the RFP as it is now for Ann Arbor, that would actually not be. Um. Really at the front of the work, because it does say specifically, they have a couple of questions that are about. Being a hundred percent focused in Ann Arbor and then it says, if you are not, like it has some things to like stipulate, like how you would explain the next one. So, to me, that doesn't necessarily speak to regionality. Um, and then the other thing in terms of the money, so what Ann Arbor was putting up was ARPA funds. So it was a one time infusion of about three million dollars. Um, in order, and that was, so that's what they put up. It was this one time infusion of three million dollars. Now, what I will say is, and so obviously, we're not looking to put up three million dollars, right? But um during the conversation um that Steve and I had with when we asked, you know, cause I was like, you know, we're. We can't afford three million dollars, like I can just say that now, maybe we could, but but, okay. So um, so we're saying, so I I did say that and what we were told is that. You know, we're thinking about these kind of programs that actually having sustainable funds is actually. What would be preferred to know what, you know. You know what to expect and um, and you know, to think about that and then that way the service matches the funds, right? So we can't say, oh, we want twenty four seven and we're gonna give you five dollars, right? So, I think that that, I think that that's part of it too, which is that that will be part of our decision, I think, or discussion of figuring out. You know, what is gonna be a good fit and the way I would suggest it is that we really look at it as we start with a pilot. And that way we grow, we get some, you know, you build some data, you get a sense of how things work in real time. And then we can have a further conversation or, you know, just another decision about ongoing services. If we're satisfied with the provider, if they're, you know, making that whatever it is that, you know, we think about that. So I would put it forward as um, as a pilot with some um. Specific thought about what we would be able to do in an ongoing basis as opposed to a one time infusion.
Yeah, the part of that is looking at uh the call hours and what the volume of the call is that would fit. Uh, the M O U. Yeah, instead of having it be twenty four seven, having it be there repeat times uh probably during the weekend. Uh, and have that be uh. In addition to the, but having it basically be need based based on previous call.
Something that's coming up for me, I think, um. So at the county level, I guess I'm wondering, I've been hearing things about a partnership or develop, you know, they're spending their, the, gonna help dollars. And I don't have, I don't know if the chief more, city manager, someone can come and speak to what has been discussed around collaboration, how that money could be.
Referencing in in terms of a regional partnership, I think the chief would probably be able to best speak to those. Uh, but yeah, the the county's doing that and we can.
The county does a tip, does a currently have a unarmed non-police response, they have co response. And also while the chief is coming, I just wanted to note this nine to five, so you can make the motion to extend while we're waiting.
Or extend to eleven or.
All in favor?
It's all running together.
As long as it's not morning, I'm good.
Uh, thank you for uh opportunity to kind of just speak about what's occurring here in the city of Ipsilanti and um. And co response, so you talked about our response, so I'll just tell you what's going on with co response and how it's impacting uh here. And then a few uh pointers about the rest of your discussion. Um, like many things and requirements in public safety, being an agency in our size, because we are smaller. Because we are physically challenged and the resource people challenge. Uh, we have to use partnerships to accomplish our goals, so those collaborations occur all across uh Washington County. And of course, this is no different. Currently, there is a a co response team that's been stood up uh through, and I don't know which funds, but. Through the county and a service, the township and Ipsilanti. That team responds to, you know, various uh calls for service, but particularly uh mental health calls for services and. You know, soft things of that nature. They are um about a month away from standing up a second team. To provide, you know, a more continual coverage for Ipsilanti and the township. Those uh two teams will provide obviously a significant amount of coverage uh here, you know, in our community and. This has been working quite well, some of the concerns. We've gotten documented, big concerns from some of the responders of surrounding uh safety. Now, this team uh employs clinicians and of course, um, you know, police response, but they're not. In uniform, but it is, you know, a small office. So there's some concerns about safety, I think what's really important to note with all of these things is one, triaging. Uh, these calls for service and those needs and then being able to make accurate risk assessments. So that risk assessment is key to all the things that, what you guys are talking about uh right now. Ann Arbor is able to do what Ann Arbor does because they have different resources and they're they're pretty insulated. With us, any type of, you know, um. Uh, agreement or understanding, it's not gonna be just with the city of Ipsilanti. We're gonna have to, uh, those understandings are gonna have to take place with Metro Dispatch, because we don't dispatch our own uh calls of service. We we uh, we um, you know, we partner out that service through through the county. And then, of course, through the county as well, so all of these partnerships where, you know, would have to materialize and take place, that's something. To consider, the other thing I would ask that you guys consider and think about when you have your uh, if you put together a committee. Of course, is. Are we creating? Another layer in the process that could ultimately get people hurt? And what I mean by that is if we got people uh looking at different, you know, types of response. And now we we create more victims or we create a delay in emergency uh response, you know, to me. Because we're talking about unarmed emergency response, well, that word emergency, we're talking about people who are in crisis. So I just think some of those things need to be considered and all, you know, you're, are you weighing this thing out? The key being, being able to really accurately make a risk assessment to these types of calls. And that's where a professional dispatching comes in, that's where, that's where they make, you know, they make their money, that's where it's it's so important. Because they are triaging and making those assessments so that we can get the right people to the right place at the right time. Internally, with uh Y P D, we made a few adjustments as well. Uh, we're requiring supervision to coordinate with uh with the uh P R, personal reporting from C M H. So that we can get the right response and make sure we have, you know, we're we're sending the right tool for the problem. So in other words, if it's not a scenario where it necessarily requires, you know, P D. Then we can make that determination and then, of course, if we have scenarios where it does require a P D or the the people involved. Have a high risk factor, then we need to respond, so I ask that this body really consider all of those things. Um, you know, in this process, that's it.
Thank you. So I have a couple of comments, I have a question first for you, Chief. Um, my question is, have you um looked at um any information, research? Other programs and other places that have non-police unarmed response?
So, I can't say that I've done extensive research on complete unarmed response. My uh research has all been on co responding and uh using that data. So there is data surrounding um that, and so that's what I primarily put is my attention on. Just like the uh our co response that we utilize here. It's based on the timeframe, it's based on, you know, the likelihood, you know, calls for service, so I was pertaining to that particular call, so. For just unarmed response, I have not done a ton of research, so I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that I've done, you know.
No, I understand, I, the reason I ask that, one is because I know of, you know, in the questions and the hiring. There were some questions, there was things around unarmed response um at that point. And since you've been here, I know this has come up, this isn't the first time, um, and so. Um, the reason I say that is because I have been doing this research and so. I do think it would be helpful, um, if we're all coming from. If if we have a certain understanding and the questions that we're putting forward, take those things into consideration. One of the things that I think has been, you know, um, one of the things that has been clear to me. As looking at these different kind of programs and the different ways that they're set up. Actually, even from the police department specifically, that there is, oh, I have not actually seen where people are like, oh, this is a. A problem or this is that, almost everything I've seen has actually been a lot of positives. By these kinds of response, um, and the ways that it has worked in terms of. The police department's workflow and different things as well, um, there's been very high favorability. Um, and that, and it, and there's programs that have been in existence for a very long time. And there is some newer programs that um, and a couple of different models. There's, but there's a few different models, in terms of thinking about things like making sure no one gets turned, triaging, risk assessment. That's a hundred percent part of anything that I think, um, and both from what we've seen in terms of what. Uh, the local organization, CBS has put forward, um, that's actually a big part of what they do. Obviously, nobody wants to put anybody in a a sense of being, getting hurt, which is why you have to have. A lot of liability insurance, all these things and protocols for safety for the workers. Um, and the community, and so I think that everyone could probably be on the same page about that. Um, but that's actually a big part of even the process for when a person calls their their number. There's an an uh extensive, and I know, I remember from the presentation, they kind of showed a little bit about what that looks like. Um, in terms of uh triaging, right? Like there might be things that they're like, there might be things that they actually can deal with without having to go in person, right? There's things that you can do on the phone with people and then what what, you know, what the things are. And that there's things that they would say, you know what, like here what your options are, we may not be the best option, um. And so, um, so I I wanna, I wanna say that, I think that that is a hundred percent true and um that. To name, that the people who would be working in these places are professionals too. Uh, they're highly trained, they um are aware and know of the work that they're signing up for. Um, and um are getting the same kind of training or resources from. Uh, high quality trainers from, you know, all over the place where there are people doing this work. Um, they're highly networked in terms of being connected with people who are, who have had success, who have learned. Um, and so each, each new um, team, that organization that comes forward. Is stronger than the previous one, because they're learning from all of, from from everything else. So I wanna put that forward, um, I think, um, in terms of thinking about the co response. One of the reasons, and I, and and I'm, I I think that, you know, until we have no problems, we should have all of the, all of. All the resources, right? So I don't wanna, I'm not, I'm not at all going to say, oh, we shouldn't have this, we shouldn't have that. But one of the reasons that, um, one of the things I want to bring forward in terms of doing community. Um, a lot of community engagement and talking to people about the current. You know, people who try to use the current system and or who choose not to for different reasons. A lot of times because of previous experience, that right now we have a gap in services because it does not cover. It does not cover, the need doesn't cover the people, there's people who have had certain experiences. There's people who probably works for just fine, right? So I'm not, again, I'm not trying to say, oh, this is supposed to replace this or not, that's I think of, for, that's a future conversation. But I just wanna name that the way what we have now um is not sufficient. And um, I don't know that one new team will fix the issue, um, but I know. What I've heard from the community around this, so I would just say that they're not the same. I think different people would work for these different organizations, um, and would then have different concerns. And um. And so I think that that's, I just wanna say, I I I don't think it has to be necessarily one or the other, um. But they are di, they're serving different populations, different people are using them. And in terms of thinking about Metro Dispatch, I think that that's another further conversation. Uh, the way that it is to put forward was actually that it was a separate number from nine one one. Um, that people could call and I think the relationship with nine one one. Um, uh, with dispatch is a, uh, is actually like an additional, was. Such a digital conversation that I would say might make sense not in the pilot phase, maybe. Um, but part of that is really training for dispatchers, which we understand based on what we've seen. That training for dispatchers is really important, because actually what happens in that place. Can determine a lot and sometimes it led to really poor circumstances for people and sometimes it's life saving, right? And so, one of the things that I know has come forward in the research is that especially when um. That a lot of times when um, that that's the, that's sometimes a missing piece or an important piece, which is the training for dispatch. To train to understand what the, what the protocol is and and what things to send to the unarmed police response, et cetera. Um, which is actually an additional piece, but that's not necessarily on the the police response team, that's more on the dispatch. And so that, um, so I think that that kind of tie in is an additional piece. Thank you.
Thanks, could you share the research with everybody?
Yeah, yes, I think I've said some things before, but I can. Um, I can definitely share some research, I think.
I just, I just have a quick question and. So Ann Arbor's bringing three million dollars, do we have any estimate on what what this will cost us? Um, just in terms of operational budget, we have to keep that balanced, so I want. We we may have to cut things if if we're going to be putting this forward, so I just, just curious about, especially with budget time looming. What are we looking to pay?
My, I was, my short answer to that, thank you, my short answer to that is, I think that that's part of something we'll have to determine. Part of this like work group process in terms of what we'd wanna put forward and what we'd wanna see. Uh, and um, and I think we could probably get some estimates or thoughts on that. Um, I don't have that for us today, but I do think that, you know, whenever we put forward in the RFP, that that should be clear.
Yeah, there there was a discussion about what uh, on like, so uh, like I said, for CBS has a grant of five, one billion dollars. Um, to to do the basic administration, they have staff in place, they have administrative, they have responders in place. They have administrative staff in place and so they have that administrated. But in terms of uh, you know, we have the public or mental health, uh, village money that we put in parks. You know, that might be an appropriate use for that, some of the uh revenue that we have coming from. Money that we put in parks, you know, that might be an appropriate use for that. Some of the uh revenue that we have coming from uh cans. Could be earmarked for that. Um, but there's other sources and then there's outside funding as well. This is a nonprofit and then there's chances for uh. Fundraising, but I think there's a a few places in our budget that small lots could be. For you, the the money that was put into uh, the budget for the um, social work. Uh huh. You know, that's, that was about fifty thousand dollars, you know, that's not really enough to betray somebody, but that could be argued in with the other two sources.
Well, did you have a, did you have an idea about, like I remember you like, maybe did, based on nation?
But you know, those are, those are the funding strength, but there's other funding.
The city might even be able, also, uh, again, this is, that's more, this is more probably for infusion, right? That this, you know, could probably even get some grant funds to help support or something like this too. There's a lot of money in this area right now. Well, okay, lots of information. What I'm hearing is that there will be. Are we, are you asking for another, a working session? Or are you all gonna have a working group? Like, I, you know, about this. But, well, I don't know. I'm ha- I'm happy to go with what council would like to see. I was thinking maybe a work group could bring. Could work on it and bring something forward as a proposal to the rest of council. That's the way I would. That's what I suggest.
Yeah, that is what I support.
Uh, one more person, not four, four, if you want, up to three. Uh, and then yeah, when you come up with something, then you can bring it forward. Are all, we're on this discussion topic for now. Great, so I'm sorry. Yeah, so, pro ten in the, can we sign my address? Do you wanna be part of this?
Yes.
As well? Enjoying it, wait on. Okay, good. Let me show you around it on my team.
Get the words, yeah. Chief on this and.
Well, a lot of you part of the, the team as well. Chief Moore.
Sure.
All right, three wards, manager, chief, okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, can't wait to see what you come up with.
There's more than the ten minutes, I said.
Yeah, yeah, well. Okay, so um. What I'll do is, we can go through liaison reports. I have a one more thing I need to add, but I'll do it during my, my mayor communication, so we can try to get through. So, police advisory commission.
Yes, so on our last meeting, um, we create, well, the commission created language for a resolution. We also.
Changed the name of that, right? We weren't calling it pretext stop, they were calling it something else.
Well, the language is there. Um, the name that they changed that is escaping me, I'm sorry, but um, after that. Um, there was further progress made on the police interaction um. Survey, um, questions were approved and whatnot, so um, eager to see where the progression with that. Um, the next meeting is this month, the twenty eighth at seven P M right here in council chambers. Um, I would encourage everybody to be in attendance. That's all.
Thank you. Human Relations Commission?
In our last meeting, we um picked a liaison to approach Y High for a joint meeting. We also reviewed chapter fifty eight and thirty eight of the board initiative. We um invited national side to present a word on what they have done in the past on formerly incarcerated population. And potential language chat, language change of in chapter fifty eight. We also approved the calendar for twenty twenty four and we are working on development of complaints.
Katie, can you remind me of the next meeting day?
Yep. Thursday, the twenty first at sixteen.
Yep. I'm, I'm glad there are meetings, okay.
Wait, wait, you just say Thursday the twenty first?
But but we are in general not on the calendar. When I look at the newsletter, every commission is on there, but a Thursday. So that is probably why we are, we are not on.
Uh, we can't be somewhere else.
Probably going to be April, to April.
Hmm.
Yes.
Oh. So that's for now, I thought like, yeah, April will be. Uh, Parks and Arts Commission?
Uh, they've heard a conversation around discussion of a new um ordinance language for. Parks Commission ordinance that will eventually come before this body. Uh, they have been in conversation with staff about um Parks and Migration Master Plan updates. On what that will look like uh this year for the plan to start in twenty twenty five. Um, they discuss the uh. And then they meet again um eighteen of this month.
Thank you. Sustainability? Yes, um. So, uh, sustainability, uh, so we are working, the commission. Uh, is working on um resilience hub network program and so. Will be doing some outreach to surrounding municipalities to ask about their interest in um working on this alongside the. A sustainability commission. Um, and uh, they're also working to bring a speaker to a commission meeting in March to talk about just transition. Um, as well as, um, oh, I think that was supposed, oh wait. Um, uh, as well as the connect with the Michigan Alliance for Justice and Climate. Um, and they're also, we're also working to, I say we, they are working to. Um, uh, some dates to speak with um, uh, Y High students. And also to have a meeting that would be during uh the school day so that um. It's like me, high school, uh, students and semis um would be able to participate. So they're looking for a time to have a um, a meeting during the school day and the student can be able to join. And um. Uh, worked on, they're working on um, they're uh reviewing the sustainably sustainable. Sustainability Plan Matrix, um, and will be deciding on priorities to bring forward, um. Yes, that is the update from there. All right, thank you. H C C?
I think this evening, my mayor wrote for work in two weeks.
All right, the planning permission?
My commission met on the twenty first, uh, there was an item on the agenda that that was pulled just before the meeting. Um, that was the uh site plan to the uh project, uh. Adjacent to the Centennial Building on on North Washington. Um, uh, folks. Showed up a couple of comments to that, but it had been taken off. Uh, one of those people is Ted Adderall, who is the brewer. For the F T L House. Um, there were a number of letters submitted uh for public comment. Um, besides the that comment, but basically the, the issue is that. People are concerned that the uh development on the, on the parking lot next to the Centennial Building just to the north. Would uh jeopardize the L House as a, as business. Um, they had uh money to renovate the, the first floor of the building to put the L House in. There was a grant from EPA to do that. Um, it's been there for a number of years. Many people are very attached to it and think that it would be detrimental to the L House business. Um, one thing, uh, there's a public character marijuana, the uh. My commission had previously met and discussed this in January and uh. Put up different, uh, they changed buffering to uh, so. Last time was presented here, there was a, there was buffers that were, that were in place. Um, they changed some of the buffering to limit the number of uh additional businesses that could be uh. permitted by zoning. Um, and there was one, one speaker to that, and that was that test wired, he was not the favorite. And the general consensus on, on the final commission is that they would prefer that uh city council. And not rely on it. And I explained that, you know, that was the advice of our council. Uh, that, that opens up certain liabilities in terms of loss. So, um, they will be bringing forward uh language progress to, to okay. Um, but no upfront that that was not their preferred means of dealing with the situation. Perhaps we're what they would prefer. Um. There was a site plan for a veterinary clinic over uh across from the, the old fire hospital. It was a, a medical clinic at the time. Um, a uh. Person who grew up in Ipsilani and who went and came back, uh, has purchased her vet's uh building and so. What happened with that is that's um, that building has been sitting empty for quite some time and that, that, that uh. That is gonna have to put a lot of money into the inside of it and so what they've done is uh progressive. Compliance with some of the, the ordinances that uh apply to the outside of the building. Parking, things like that, how much light we have for parking, it's all the kind of stuff. Um, trash, those kinds of things are, are being uh. Extended and and giving them grace to to put that in place on uh, at an extended timeframe. Um, simply due to the fact that they've taken this building that has been out of commission for quite a time. And putting it to good use and, and they did a really good job of uh, you know, meeting the needs of. Uh, the people that watch by that space and people who are going to this space. But giving that, that new owner uh some new timeline, timeline. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Z B A, so I mean, what appeals? I don't think there was a meeting, right? Tim Todd?
Got nothing.
Watts? So excited, my first Watts meeting. Um, so uh, one thing that we did, one thing to say, I'll, I'll just say, even though I know. We uh have a challenge with our own commissions and boards, I also just wanna say. That there are positions for um different special interest groups uh with Watts. Uh, so like for instance, with non-motorized and things like that. For uh folks, I want also extend that out for general public. Um, would love to have some more Ipsilani folks in those spaces. Um, and one of the things we did, we went over this crash report. Uh, that was that five-year uh crash trend. And uh, there's a couple of things to be of note of interest here, um, because um. Even though Ipsilani is so small, we show up on all the wrong list. Um, in terms of this crash report and um, and also we have, let's see here. There's like uh highest frequency intersection crash locations. Um, we have one, Cross Street and Hamilton. Do we agree? Do we agree? Um, and we also have. Um, we're looking at some of these different numbers, which I, I won't go through all of this with you all, even though it's very interesting. Um, but one of the, some of the things I also noticed um is that we. Uh, the, we were voting on this idea of like getting to zero deaths or uh serious injuries. For pedestrians and cyclists by twenty fifty. And my challenge to the group is, we can do better than that. Uh, so, so, you know, trying to think about what that looks like. And so, you know, having a discussion about how design comes into play. Um, in terms of thinking about how we can protect people from serious injury and death. Um, from just walking our street. Um, so there, we had a lively discussion about that, um, in, in thinking about how we could move on some of those pieces. We also talked about, um. Let me see here, so I might bring some things forward more specifically for us to consider um from this, as I'm trying to. As I'm meeting and learning about how we use the information and data from Watts to help support. Um, work that we're trying to do here in the city, both in terms of funding um through those different channels. Um, as well as, you know, these different partnerships. We also um talked a bit about um a resolution, so when I talked about the. Um, the um. Uh, the study that they're doing right now for U S twenty three. Um, and our board has a resolution uh around this, um. And there was some conversation among the group about whether this is something that other folks might wanna look into doing. Um, and then, let me just look at this here, um. Ooh, I had, there was a question, but I don't have the full notes, I have to look at it more deeply. Um, to think about transit option and then um. There's a public comment until March ten. For, for that, for that uh conversation about U S twenty three. Um, so that's coming up. Soon, um, and, and then they'll be putting things forward in terms of what's possible or what they're considering. So, for instance, um, if folks are interested in um a tran- oh, that's what it was, the transit option. Um, being part of thinking about how they can deal with congestion um with U S twenty three. Then you wanna put that in the public comment because that's not currently an option that they were considering, that they put forward. Options that they considered all expand um, U S twenty three by adding lanes and things like that. And I know I talked about the trains that lanes before, um, that group um was putting forward and advocating for a transit option. And then A A A T A um came forward and said that they wanted to help work on what that could look like. And so there's some conversations about what that would be, um. And so, you know, just try to watch that as there will be impact for us. And then the other thing I'll just note is that, uh, speaking of A A A T A. Um, so we voted, you know, at this village uh for in- increase and enhanced services. And one of those increased, those enhanced services will start earlier than uh plan. And so uh sometime this spring, we will actually be um half, starting to see the um express bus. Between um Ann Arbor and Ipsy, down Washington, um, coming into fruition, which is really exciting for anyone who's been in that corridor. Um, and hopefully, we somehow have less cars, which will make it actually faster. And or we will have a bus lane, which will make it even faster, so. But anyway, just so folks know that that express um will be, that express is expected uh sometime this spring. A lot more from Watson, I've probably heard in a long time. Um, so Urban County actually meets next week. Um, in terms of the G B A, the last meeting, um, there were some beautification items. That were uh voted upon and passed around hanging planters. We had a presentation from Director Westler about lights. Last, yep, um, approved the budget for year twenty four, twenty five. Um, and also, um, our. And director let folks know that the special event sponsorship application window is now open. Um, through March thirty first, twenty twenty four, for those businesses um to apply their, our. Things that folks want to do within the district, so I wanted to speak to that here this evening. Um, yeah. That, that was another gift, or again, uh, friends of roughly pool?
Uh, we've had this month, um, in addition to the research, same conversations, uh, there's. Funders are going on, so for the past three years, there was ten thousand dollars a county that had been used for. Funders are coming on, so for the past three years, there was ten thousand dollars a county that had been used for. Purposes of uh, expanding the programming in terms of, there's uh, subsidizing swimming lessons. Uh, for folks that can't afford to pay for it, um, general other things like. There's uh, swim seats that you can check out, you can check out a book, um, with most of the donations and that, so. They've uh, got a grant with, or a contract with Metro Parks that are, uh, keeping some money, some money that will help with that. Uh, but that funding from the county, um, has ended, it was three years, like, and uh. And clearly, for ways to augment that, um. And to want us, there is other places that's trying to bring that, it's uh. The services that provide, I mean, they, they provide free lessons to Partridge, uh, other community groups that come in there, um. So, yeah, our partnership with them is, is really crucial for them to be able to operate, they do a lot of fundraising. And have done an excellent job of keeping that, and, and expanding it, so that they can expand services. With that, what else is going on, um? Yeah, I think there's, there's been some, some confusion about accounting between the city, uh, and, um. And kind in terms of uh, HR costs, um, and uh, invoices and things like that. I know they're regular, we've just called, uh, to kind of, you got a part of the issue is that the uh. The money comes to the county, it gets accounted for by the city, it doesn't really work, they're focused, so we're getting them, it's just their, their work. Uh, and they also have a staggered fiscal year, so it's kinda hard to keep track of that as well, um. So, um, to the point, uh, they, they don't especially delay as soon as the service is integrated at that level.
Alright, thank you. Um, we're now at, at the post business, I need to throw that with that, so I'm gonna start down here, council member Tuesday.
Simply mentioned that earlier today, I had an opportunity to. Meet through the, your chief more with three of the new officers. And for those who haven't had a chance to do that, uh, I strongly encourage you to do it, um. I think, I think Chief is bringing on some good folks, and so I'm, I'm looking forward to be. Developing a good relationship with them, uh, and others, uh, but if you have a chance, I think it was a really productive conversation. I urge all of you to do the same if you have a chance.
Uh, two quick things tonight, uh, number one, I just wanted to thank all the staff that helps manage, um, this election. Um, and a big thank you, they can do for winning multiple hats, um, as always, seems like in this uh. City, but uh, for city clerk and manager and running that, managing the really voting, I heard good feedback from residents that participated absentee in person, et cetera. Uh, number two, um, the city was awarded a Play is Essential grant from the M Parks Foundation to install a communication board. By the Liston River Playground and Riverside Park, uh, so that was enough, let's we get the statewide M Parks conference. Um, and more to come, um, that. I'm sorry.
You said the grant, what is the grant for?
Uh, uh, to install a communication board in Riverside Park at the. Universal access, correct?
Thank you.
Continuing our uh, twice a month, uh, meetings with, uh. Here on River Watership Council in terms of the Dan River move, uh, I think you've got, uh, a report that's been here's, um. Previously went over like important in February, uh, kind of a dry run for, uh, eventually have to go, um. Public meeting in the city, so that's the thing for report out of that, and, um, that's one of the things that was the contract that, that too. Uh, that'll kind of at some point in the future, uh. To give an update, uh, what else is happening to that point, uh, HR WTC is having. An event tomorrow night at their headquarters, uh, it's called River Evers, which is a fundraiser, but. Um, it's an opportunity to go to their, their headquarters, Ann Arbor, uh, Seawake Programming, they have, uh, each of those there and, and. Just see all the good work that they, and they also have a, a grant, they'd be, they'd be, uh, suppliers of, uh, support for. Um, the agreement infrastructure, um. Their education within the city and, and other places around the county, as a collaboration with President Watership Councils in the area, um. On the eighteenth, I went to, uh, the Washington County Bike Summit, uh, which is organized by. Uh, coalition of, of bike groups around, uh, the area. Um, you know, we have the Ipsy Bike Co-op, uh, a lot of folks related to that went. Um, it's, it's an interesting meeting that is very, 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 let me say very again, Ann Arbor oriented. And it, and it's problematic, because, you know, there was time difference in one of their city council members about. The programs hasn't been going on there, nobody even said that, let's do that, um, I brought that up too, and said, come on, hey. We've known each other for a while, why is that? Um, but to that point, uh, they, I attended, uh. Those sessions that were relevant, they're doing studies about how people get around downtown, things like that, it's a different city, um. I don't think we have those kind of issues, but we do have an infrastructure that's helpful to that. Um, and pointing that out, uh, Ann Arbor is, is now in the twenty-first century, trying to catch up to what, uh. Uh, Champagne, Urbana, and Madison, Wisconsin had in nineteen seventies, so they think that they're progressive in that regard, but they're really. Fifty years behind to where the cities that are out there, um. They spent a lot of money on studies to figure out where to put bike lanes, things like that, and how they work. They did that, and they seem to be having interviews with, uh, um. M dot, and so one of the, one of the conversations there was, uh, for them to get control of, uh. The M dot roads through there, there's, there's a cost of that, and they can, and they can get it controlled, but it's, you know. Uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, and the M could save all the repair costs for that, and so we've got. Hamilton and Iiron, uh, to have the bike lanes and things like that, and my knowledge and discuss. We didn't have to have that conversation, so I don't know what that was like, but it didn't seem to be. M dot was here and engaged and, and I'm big at that, but. Different, different pains for different, for different cities, but to that point, uh. Uh, the Non-Motorized Advisory Committee, which is a subcommittee of the planning commission, is uh, trying to organize a bike ride, uh, on May fifth. Um, to uh, introduce people to the new infrastructure, people who are, uh, not necessarily hardcore bikers, uh. That wanna get out with their family and do that, so they have that, uh, that ride around town, which is for people to help, uh. Do that, I guess, I'll fix your mind, I can currently coordinate that, um, so that should be coming forward, um. And I think it'd be great, because then, you know, people can go out and see the infrastructure, understand how it fits into their, their lives. Other than that, uh, I think Ashley Box could put up an invitation to speak to his class next week. Uh, I think that's at the same time as M and L, uh, near May, August, stay in town and do that with them, and, uh. That's it.
Thanks, Councilmember Simmons. Uh, yes, so, um, just as I, I promised to keep you all updated. Uh, we have selected our first, uh, Ipsy Youth Poet Laureate. Um, their name is Ruth Mella, and uh, there will be an event on June ninth. From six to eight P M at the Frey House, which will be kind of a big kickoff celebration. Um, for that, and there'll be other poets speaking, things of that, so y'all might hear another poem from me, you know. Um, also, just wanna, uh, big, um. Uh, big news, uh, so there was, um, a big, uh. Michigan State Leo, uh, Grant for Community Centers, and. Um, we have, there's four projects in the county, and, um, within three, uh, right in Ipsilanti. Uh, and so, in the city, we have, uh, two, and so, um. One is located right in Ward Three, um, and I was happy to write a letter of support, uh, for that project. And the other one is, uh, part, a project that I'm a part of called Home for Healing. Um, and so, uh, that means that leveraging, so Home for Healing was seven hundred and fifty. Thousand dollars, I think, the other was a million, and I can't remember, so either way. A lot of, a lot of funds being, um, moved in this space, um, to help support our community. Um, and so that's really exciting news, um, to see those funds coming from the state level. Uh, another thing that's not as happy as that is that, um, I've been getting contacted from folks. Uh, with concerns about, um, mental health services and the court, uh, being moved from Ipsilanti to Ann Arbor. Um, and so, I'm trying to follow up on that, and I know this is the conversation, I know some folks are going to the county commission. Um, on this conversation, um. I'm sorry, um, but, uh, but just wanted to bring this forward as something to look at, um, because, uh, yeah, folks have been bringing it forward. Um, this is just a, I saw this, uh, come forward, and I just wanted to put this out there. As like, ooh, this is something that might be interesting to look at, or just some possibilities as we've been talking about. Um, housing and support for the unhoused community, um, I saw an article about in Baltimore. Uh, the mayor there was able to secure eighteen million dollars to convert two hotels into shelter. Uh, for the unhoused community, and so, and I know I've heard that being, uh, you know, things people have talked about. And you know, we use a lot of hoteling, um, for shelter now, um, but it's not, uh. Long-term or continuous, or that's not the right thing, but, um. And so, just to be like, oh, that's interesting, I wanna learn more, and then. This is a question, uh, which is, when thinking, when we were doing the work on the commissions. Uh, one of the things we talked about is the commission's training and onboarding, and having that be a kind of regular intervals. Um, and this came up in part because, um, there, we have new commissions and, um. And the Sustainability Commission, this came up, um, as, as being of interest to different new folks. And so I just wanted to, um, check in about, um, timing or when we can think about, um, starting those.
Uh, passive of staff right now is, we've not been able to put that together, but. Once the, the new clerk comes on, there's more available time, I can. Make sure to sit down with the, the clerk and the clerk's staff and start getting that going, and then we'll also put some money. In that budget for, uh, in the clerk budget for boarding missions trip.
Okay, that sounds good, maybe that's something, um. Maybe, especially with the budget piece, something that we can maybe think to move work on over the summer, um, and maybe be able to check off then. Great, I just wanted to kind of check in about that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ricky.
Just a few things, I just wanted to contain the celebration of Black History Month, last month I was able. To attend some great events, one event in Harvard was the Michigan Black Summit, which was a beautiful event. That gave us an opportunity to celebrate and celebrate and honor trailblazers of that community, so that was a really nice event. Also, I was able to attend the closing, the closing event at the Riverside Art. Or the Where Do We Go From Here, K F R Community, the art show, so that was really nice. And, um, last night, I, along with the mayor and other council members. We were able to go to James twenty-nine to celebrate, that was a really nice evening as well. And I would also like to say, rest in peace to Eric May, former council member of Michigan.
Thank you, um, alright, so communication, I have a couple of things, um, one also, um, the. Black Summit in Baton Harbor was amazing, um, I was able to sit on a panel of mayors, um, on the opening night and. Talk about, you know, our experiences and, um, how we look forward to collaborating together going forward. And then attend the same event that council member King was able to attend, so that was, that was wonderful, um. It's interesting, Councilwoman Simmons, you brought up what, uh, the, the hotel purchases in Baltimore, so the mayor of Baltimore is like one of my friends that I actually. How wrong, look at that, uh, so, you know, I don't know if we have capacity like within our. City limits to do something like that, but I was interested in how they, they galvanize support to, to get that done, so whatever I find out, I will, I will share. Um, two other things, one being March is National Reading Month, so I encourage everyone to go try to read. For some children, whether it be in a school or a relative, or, you know, someone, um, to do some reading, or if you just do some additional reading of your own. Um, reading is really important and fundamental, um, and I do plan to go see.
That's seven hundred page, which is.
Rather than packet, um, so we, yes, I meant my, my quota for the one, probably with it, but, um, and then I do plan to also, um. Go speak to the students around just civic engagement, that's always really important for us to do, um, next week. And then lastly, something that does require us to have a little bit of discussion, so I'm sorry, um, but there was a question from. Um, the county clerk about how we would like to proceed in terms of the upcoming May election that we now have on the books. Do, if we want to have early voting available for that election, because that would require them to prepare, it would. There would be a cost, um, I would, you know, associated with that. Um, and so we have the ability to decide what we want that to look like, if we want to do it at all, have early voting, and if we do. Um, how long of a lead up to the actual Tuesday date would you want that to occur, um? So just wanna put that out and see if we can kind of some consensus here this evening, so we can pass an information board and we prepare. Um, for the May election, um. So, um. So, the other piece of that would be that, for this, in this vote discussion, constantly saying you have to accuse yourself. Um, from making any part of this. Can I ask a question, sir, Mr. Far?
Sure, that's a question.
I just wanna make sure, randomly, so, yeah. But that, um. Well, anyway, I'd love to talk about it, the, the, the talking about election, well, anyway, doesn't matter. Um, it's not about the election, it's about the process, but anyway, but my question is, what is the, like. Is there now a requirement around early voting from the law, like?
Early voting is not required for specials, only state.
Okay.
And, uh, adding on to this, council would just need to determine if they would like to have early voting for this or not, the county. Will be settled, determine how many days of early voting there will be, but when we approved that agreement, we've been counting it was to. Have all elections, um, uh, with the nine days of early voting.
And then what is the cost?
Well, the cost will be, it'll be less than, than typically, but I mean, it's still, you're gonna have to. Depending on how many days, uh, of early voting we have. Um, you're gonna have to have the equipment, you're gonna have to test the equipment, you're going to have to have election inspectors. Um, and then you have to have more county staff to close out the, the machines during the, uh, election night at eight P M. Um, I will say that Ward Three only has, well, less than six thousand voters. Uh, in the presidential primary, which, you know, didn't get a ton of, uh, advertisement, only had. Three hundred city voters, citywide, and then also. Excluding inactive voters, we're down to about three.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right, that, that.
Was that in person, or that?
That was just at the early voting.
See, I was just like, why do we share, I was like.
Yeah, that was just. The first, the first time it was, so, but it's, it's, you know, it, it's up to council how, how council wants to proceed, but. It's, it, it constantly.
So, yeah, when it comes to special election, you have to.
I have a question, other than recall, there is one other item on.
There is absolutely nothing else. There is absolutely nothing else in county except for election.
I thought there was a school board, young school, that obviously is
I would agree.
I would say yes, just because um sometimes people don't have the autonomy to go vote on the actual day.
The managers, the managers are a point of reference, any ideas, it's too early to say what that early voting cost for the presidential?
For the, the, you're talking about the past elections, um I'm uh, I'm assuming per the site, just the election inspectors doing that uh eight to nine hours a day and they're maybe around three fifteen and twenty dollars an hour. So I mean, it's, it's not inexpensive.
But it's nine days.
If we wanted to do that, if, like, it's, it would be up to the county and then the clerk department. They would discuss how many days of early voting, I would say nine days would be very extreme for this.
Yeah.
Um, but if council determines they would not like to go through with the early voting, then of course the, the uh permanent ballot list has not been started, so people just receive their ballot automatically, also there is uh AV list, so we will have would like to, then you can let the county, county know by tomorrow, so we can get, get planning on that.
Um, so what I would ask is if someone, if we did have a motion for this and we can officially vote on it. Um, being that you have to give it to the county and they have to do a lot of work to prepare for this as well by tomorrow.
There will, uh, another clarifying point, uh in the absence of the early voting, you're still absentee. And how soon do they have to know?
Um, I just ordered the AV applications today, uh ballots had to be available forty days prior to the election.
And now I would move to motion for early voting.
There's support. Seeing on the motion, we have, uh, Mr. Barr?
Uh, according to Robert's rules, it's best to have a positive motion rather than a negative motion, so if you have a motion to have early voting and you don't want to vote that down, rather than have a motion to save the vote after early voting.
Alright, so can someone move state? Right, but we can almost coordinate the go forwards, we need to, yeah, we need to do it again, so we can hold on. And I, I can't even move.
So, so I moved to motion, what, what were the
The uh Robert says, doesn't like negative motion. Saying we shouldn't do this, rather than saying we should do this and then saying no, we're not gonna do it. So you have moved already, then we have early voting.
Wonderful, it's on the table, discussion. Councilor's seat.
So I mean, realistically, they don't have any if we say yes, we would like it, we really don't know at this point how many, that could be two days, like six days, that could, it really could be like anything.
Yeah, we don't know.
Yeah.
Do we bear the full cost of that or in any other?
Yes, we would bear the full cost of that.
And it would be at the freight house?
Or It could be at the freight house, um, our site, we have, every person involved in the county agreement can also sort of the L R C, which is over on Palmback
Yeah.
and then a freight house, so it would be unlikely that we would engage with both of those locations, but
Uh, further questions or discussion, also ten fifty-five, so must be voted on this, we have thirty-seven. Further discussion.
Again, I would just restate, um, I think early voting is not a theory because sometimes people work for many different reasons, sometimes people just cannot get to the polls on the day of election day.
Thank you. Alrighty, please call and roll on the motion.
Councilman Brutuson?
No.
Councilmember McLean?
No.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Wolfaxen? Mayor Brown?
No.
Councilmember Sweet?
No.
Motion carries with one yes, five no's and one recue.
Um, it's ten fifty-six, we need a motion to extend, because we have a few more things.
Support.
On favor. Oppose?
Yeah.
Okay, um, city manager, your turn.
Um, some staff has submitted the housing resi readiness grant for uh to engage with the public regarding affordable housing. Uh, the RFQ that um council approved was Carlyle Warpin's, you do public engagement um for the Water Street development, that will be engaging soon, we're, we're waiting until, you know, we start to actually move the soils away before we start that. Um, the community services director interviews will be completed this Thursday. Um, staff has been working with uh J thirty-nine to submit a P D rather than the, the site bins they removed. Presidential primary was completed without issue. Um, uh Triple A T A will be providing a uh presentation at our next meeting on the nineteenth regarding potential locations for the bus depot, um so that will be uh six P M start, if council doesn't have an issue with review, then we can start at seven. Um, I'm gonna be meeting with uh uh W C C, discuss the M O U regarding Park Ridge and I met with uh Mr. Byron, I met with Monica from the uh Senior Center to bring an amended uh M O U before council um to what Councilmember, uh Member Tewson was saying about uh Y P A passing a resolution um concerning pretextual stops or whatever term is being used. Uh, the resolution was, was approved to recommend to me. Um, that's not the appropriate place for it. So if council would like, I can, we can prepare a resolution and uh bring it for you, or we can send it back to, or I can send it back to uh uh Y P A for them to re-adopt recommending this to council. And then that is it.
Alright. This is our second opportunity for public, uh, councilman, still? Yeah, okay, yeah, because I know, but it's only because you mad. If my preference would be that we don't move the meeting to six, because we have two meetings that week uh with the interviews as well, too. So I just want to put forward that my preference would be that we keep our record. And the reason why we want to move it is because Triple A T A is coming with their presentation.
Correct, but I can advise them if we had seven.
Their, their presentation
I just want Early, as early as possible, but I'm just saying.
Andrew proposes a late night compromise, six thirty.
I'm good. Hmm, right in the middle.
Sure.
Way there.
Let's just tell Triple A T A to just speak really fast.
Alright, six thirty? The will of the council. Alright, is that, was that it? Okay, this is our second opportunity for public comment, you'll have three minutes to address the council, I'll start with those in the audience, if you'd like to raise your hand. So you're in first, please come forward and then we'll move to Zoom, and then you can be next, yes. Alright, good evening.
Good eve, that's great evening, I'm sorry.
Uh, many of you know me, um however, there's a couple of new council people that I have never met. I know Lieutenant Jason Servai, I'm retired from the city, there's no police department, served the city proudly for twenty-eight years. Um, and I'm just here to kind of talk about the police department. And uh mayor specifically, in the two fifteen uh twenty-four M live article about the uh voting no confidence, you were quoted in that article saying, um, speaking about differing viewing points of uh policing and how they're uh, it's common to have different viewpoints of policing. However, it's paramount that we prioritize the greater good over the individual interests, I a thousand percent agree with that. And stand firmly behind our chief as he strives to act in full reform and ensure the highest standards of professionalism within our police force. You further go on to say that the, his commitment to accountability, transparency and fostering positive community relationships stands as a beacon of hope in these turbulent times. Now, Mr. McLean, you may be interested in this, but I'd like to know how you reconcile the hiring of a officer from another department that had been released for a criminal offense. The kid glove treatment of another current officer who committed a criminal offense and ended up with a court injunction against him. The um movement away from qualified field training officers to an acclimation process where officers ride with a senior officer at a very young police department. For two weeks, them being released on their own with ill and no training or documentation. I'd also like to know what the city's insurance account carry of that's at. Or if you guys are just ready, you might watch the zero's behind a one on a check. Um, and uh law enforcement in the state of Michigan is very smart. I've gotten calls from people who I know from other departments, that have gotten calls from people from the chief's administration saying, hey, I know you sent anybody that you guys fail out of your field training uh system to us, we'll hire them. That is a fast track to ending up as the next Highland Park Police Department or the next Dexter Police Department. You don't want that here. It's very bad. My grandma used to say it's a little anecdote. And this uh, keep the uh no vote and no confidence in mind with this. If one person looks at you and says you're a bad person, they may not just like you. If two say you're a bad person, they're conspiring against you. If three say you're a bad person, you're a bad person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, good evening, mayor, mayor program, council, everybody, um. So, I'm here to speak on behalf of uh several support organizations that act independently uh throughout this community and specifically to address this unarmed emergency response uh discussion that you're having. Um Councilman uh Simmons, you spoke of a gap in care. Um, and I wanted to tell you that you have a community here in Ypsilanti who lives here of about seventy people who fill that gap, uh because of whatever reason, they can't trust you, chief. Um, last week alone, we uh as individual organizations, and I won't name them because I haven't asked permission um received calls from S O S, uh we received calls from C N H. We received calls from individual officers who were unable to meet the needs of our fellow um Ypsilannians, what we call, are we Ypsilannians? Okay. Um, we provided that direct support, it was medical, it was uh de-escalation, it was mental health, it was getting them to hospital, it was getting them safe care that the city and the county has been unable to provide in a horrible lack of understanding and taking care of the most vulnerable in your community. I haven't seen y'all at the freight house, why are you not engaging? I haven't seen you at the community brunches across the street. Why are you not there? Why are you not talking to these people who you're throwing in jail or you're trying to create better relationships with, but it's failing miserably. And we are filling that gap in care, but you're talking about proposing this budget when we're doing this already. One of the things we're asking is that you partner with these organizations that are already existing and provides, if it's budget time, throw us in that mix. We're gonna be a lot cheaper and we're trained by people who train for the U N. Well, I've done fifty hours of training in the last two years is forty-two much? We, how much do we have to pay for another additional twenty-four hours of training for one person when you're talking about a group of fifty who volunteers and comes and we show up for coffee? And then we go out and we, uh, two weeks ago I had to break up a knife fight, you didn't hear about it? Nobody went to jail, everybody was fine. And we're trained how, how to do that, nobody was harmed.
Thank you. Does anyone else?
Good evening, good evening, um Angela's work, you guys have probably gotten emails from me, I drove from Cleveland, got here about six P M and I'll be going straight back. The reason why I'm so, which I haven't explained to you guys, is I'm a retired Washington County Sheriff's Office dispatcher. I can, I can speak into some stuff that was wildly misrepresented tonight. Um, okay, there's so much, I'm gonna try and, I've sat here for like five hours now, I'm gonna try and be as quick as I can. Essentially, uh it's not just that, my dad was born here, got through master's degree, was a coach at Eastern, like I have roots here, okay? I literally went out after an entire, under five years. That man has ruined this police department and you guys are complicit in it. Let me be very clear, like I'm on, I'm on record, I have written word that I, I told you guys. He's not even a police officer in the state of Michigan. He's not even here to come and get the same, same state certification that the people that he claims that he's leading, he's not a leader, he's a boss, okay, he's a figurehead. I believe he was brought here to be a figurehead. Councilman Tewson, right, am I pronouncing that correctly? It was so gross, the meeting that happened uh last week or the week before, when you said that these officers with talent that I worked with, that I protected for ten years in my nineteen-year career. The talent that was at this police department are leaving because they don't want to work for a you either said black man or black chief, yes you did, because I, I went back in nature, I was hearing it, right? Because I, I almost threw up. Okay, it can't be, he's not the first black chief here. There have been a few, so why now is there a mass exodus? It's him, it is him, well, not just him, it's your top two. One of them shouldn't even be here, and you know that, and it was, and it was covered up. That's fine though, because it's documented. Um, let's see, some quotes, several articles about how you, your goal was to promote black officers to hire more officers, you've done that, right, you got rid of the white ones. There's a disabled one over there that couldn't go back to the road, that got the state accreditation for this department, if you're here to make this better. You got rid of the person that, that brought state accreditation to where like hardly any
Your comments apartment council, please, if you have to come.
Okay, sorry, I apologize.
I don't know what, I'm wrong, but listen, it doesn't matter about black and white. My son brought me to this meeting, he's on fifteen years old, you understand, so what are we gonna do for the youth? Y'all keep talking about rest, get the rest, listen, he's under fifteen years old, he the only child in here right now. And he stopped me and said, mom, look, what, what am I looking, yes, I've been drinking, we may have to have two, he's like, you're gonna, you go down, it's excuse I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, my name is Donovan, even young man, and I don't mean no disrespect, and I don't need you. But listen, y'all supposed to be a representation of what our future is supposed to look like. My son is fifteen, he the only child in there, show me what you standing up for and stop talking about rest.
Yeah, thank you so much, I want to allow you to finish your comment.
I appreciate it.
And I, I want to hear from
And I, and I love to see you here, like this is what we need, but we need like, it doesn't matter, that stuff is popular right now, that's great that unarmed, like, uh, we're gonna send unarmed. Uh, I'm sure Jessica Nagel from Eagle Park in two thousand two, when a police officer, when she was responding to a a dog complaint, which I think is one of the Uh, I'm sure Jessica Nagle from Eagle Park in two thousand and two, when a police officer, when she was responding to a, a dog complaint, which I think is one of the complaints that you, she was shot and killed. As a police officer, my husband was, my husband's sergeant, was they have, uh, ten times.
One, two, three, four.
I don't know. That they realized had weapons. You said, we're gonna send them on calls with no weapons. We don't know that they're called with no weapons. Do you know how many calls I sent police to, and even if I asked them, they give you that information. They have mental issues. We don't know, there's something most dangerous calls.
Our community.
Like, this is the problem, people are making decisions that don't do the job. You guys are in a form of community and mixed, you just over stuff, you have no idea about. Talk to people that are doing it, because they're the ones that are gonna have to sit in those chairs, reading things differently. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. Um, I just wanted to do one more quote, I'll sit down, uh. You said, mayor, mayor last year, I'm sorry, she said, mayor last year. Um, and I quote, I'm sorry, I was like furiously like writing as I was hearing things, I came for one thing, and then there was like just a whole bunch of other stuff thrown. Um. It was something about, let's see, I might have written it down on my phone there. Oh, you know what, actually, no, I just screenshot, I apologize. I was bouncing between. Everyone has spoken about the grit of the individuals that worked at this police department, Moore said. They're committed, and even though some of the challenges and the shortages, they understand how important it is to provide the service to this community. Despite staffing troubles, struggles, people have spoken highly of the officers still there according to the new chief, but now they're leaving because they don't like you. Right? They're leaving because you're poor.
Thank you, thank you. And now this department's done.
Yeah.
Excuse me, okay. How much more? Well.
For the record.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to say for the record that, um, the comments were not made by me, though. Me and the person who made the comments should have said last night, I did not make those comments.
Aha.
There we go.
Okay, I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Um, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council or propose?
Please, Tom. I apologize to the city council, who allowed me to work, but it wasn't evident of vote or laid like. Listen.
Can you say your name for me?
My name is Tommy, Eli, um. Thank you. And my son's sitting back there to the hearing, the box at the yard, and. He stopped me. Everyone's walking home, he said, mom, but. So what? He said, that's the city hall. I said, okay, he said, I'm gonna go there, I'm gonna go in about this lit. Well, come on, let's go find out, because this is city hall, right, all is welcome, right? Come on, let's go find out. But with the understanding, this is your mother. Understand who your mother is and how your mother is, and, and yes, just occasionally one can happen, but. I know, God says, come as you were, and this is how you know the truth. Only child sitting here is a. The child gonna show him. Better than what we, we talking about white and black and police, there's some goodness that, we ain't got nobody else to call, guess who we picking up the phone to dial? Nine one one? Notice they're righteous and they moral, and they got moral, they got moral intentions, and they want to be right there, but at the same time, these people gotta pay their bills too. Paying down, talk to somebody, and to end up at all, when you can't save yourself, you call to come save you. You do judge their characteristics. And behaviors. And immoral. Acts. You understand what I'm saying? I don't care, I don't even know who the police chief is, I don't even know who the government is besides Martin, I would. But listen. It don't matter, what we gonna do for the youth? But right now, rap, poetry, everything is, is taking over our children's mind. Within the last three years, I have lost eight people, young and old. But keep talking about this, well, what we gonna do to save our children? This is, this is our future. This is our future. When he wanted to be here and I was inquiring about. So, um, hey. This is what I do as a parent, the best I know how. The child went to school, y'all graduated, y'all got degrees on how to parenting and do this thing a little better than it, even if they are mine. Went to school and graduated, went to college and graduated, got a degree on, then you can do it better than with, um, your degree, so. Listen.
Thank you.
Forget, what child gonna do to save our kids?
I want to share something with you, uh, because you normally don't do it back and forth, but I'm gonna let you know. So they don't know race, excuse me, I wasn't done.
Would they, the kids don't know race unless you planted it and they get, they don't know that.
But I'm sorry, but I, I offer you a resource, right? No, I'm saying for your son, so we do have opportunities for young people to engage with us on our boards and commissions. Um, to learn about what's happening in the community and share their input, and so I'm saying, if he is interested in really getting involved in being a voice for young people, he can come work alongside it.
See, that's where you messed up, not whether you, because I'm trying to get you to be a voice for him, so how do you, you got to teach the teacher with the student, like, so.
Absolutely.
You know, and.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
That's your way of telling me to write the, or.
I've been, there'll be other members of the. Maybe you want to come and educate them. There are board and commission spots for youth, if you want to participate, we can talk about.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council, sorry for petting you. Uh, I just want to reiterate that, um, we're very fortunate to have, uh, a freight house here in our community. And starting today, there's U M S programming for all Ipsy residents, and a lot of them are family focused events. Um, I had the pleasure of going last fall, and it was absolutely amazing just to see the program they have. If you guys need any help finding information or programming on that. Be happy to go out of my way and show you those resources. Um, I understand sometimes people come here with all their own different agendas and come at you with a hostile environment. I just want to come here and just embrace the strengths that we do have in this community. Because I know all of us are here for our own reasons that we believe in this place, and that's why I'm here right now, and I just want to thank you guys for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council before we move to Zoom? Okay, is anyone on Zoom?
If you would like to comment in your own Zoom, please grab your hand, that's the first one on the list, it's Raven, Alpian, I'm trying to pronounce something correctly. Uh, you'll need to, um, uh, unmute yourself to count that. Raven?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, I just wanted to express my support for the unarmed response team. Um, I live on the south side of Ipsy homeowner, um. It's not a new concept, there's been a couple of cities that have implemented it, um, Albuquerque, Dan, Ohio, Seattle. Um, Oakland, a couple others, and in the case of the Albuquerque team, within like the first. Two years, thirty-three thousand calls were diverted from the police to this team. Um, and across the board, the failures that they have had been a result of like. You know, not enough funding or employees, so they haven't been as a. You know, structurally, they were not working, it was because of resources. So I feel like that's a really good sign. I think that Ipsy really needs this, as some of the people who have said, how Desiree has said. Um, just wanted to express my support for it.
Thank you.
One more individual with their hand rings, Cormelia Stew, I'll let you speak now.
Good evening.
Uh, hey, how you guys doing? I, I'm sorry, I can't be there in person, I would have loved to be there, it got a little, it got a little active. Um, I'm actually, I'm out of town, um, for my, for my birthday, which is today. Uh. I appreciate you guys. Um, I, I'm, I'm glad that, um, the city manager did bring up the secondary traffic violation ordinance change. I, I was at the, um, Y pack meeting where the commissioners were directed to, um. Make that resolution out to go to the city manager, and that city staff was gonna have to actually formulate language to then bring to council. So if it is council who needs to come up with the language for the ordinance, I, I, I know, I know I heard the city manager mention that he was gonna push that forward to you guys, I just. I, I would urge, you know, that this is something that be expedited. I know the first time that we talked about this was in December. And at that time, the, the holdup on it, because it was something that council had been made aware of, was that language was supposed to be provided by the police chief. Um, and so now that Y pack has already unanimously kind of forwarded this resolution, and it's gotten some, some media attention. Um, I, I just do think it should be a top priority, um, for the city manager to get that resolution over to council so that we can move forward. I know an ordinance change requires like two public hearings. Um, and so it's something that, that probably should be, be prioritized in my opinion. And then I do also want to speak on. Um, the unarmed response program, I was really happy to, to see you guys get this work group together. I think. In, in general, just because I've been, um, a part of a couple of work groups on the state level myself. Um, it helps to have community leaders, um, specifically from like directly, um, impacted communities and also stakeholders as a part of these work groups, just to get like comprehensive data collection and perspectives. Um, I don't know if that's something that council, uh, has the power to do in, in assigning work group members, but it would probably be really, really helpful. Um, but, like I said, just, just to ensure comprehensive perspectives, to seek out, um, some community stakeholders, um, community leaders and, and people from directly impacted communities. To kind of help, uh, formulate the proposal, uh, for council to ultimately vote on. So, um. Yeah, that's all, that's all I wanted to say. Uh, like I said, again, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, and, uh, yeah, appreciate your time, guys.
Thank you, happy birthday again.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Alright, are there any others on the line?
Um, there are no other hands raised.
Okay. Um, so. We'll close public comment. Uh, council member Simon.
Yeah, I just want to have a response to comment right quick, okay? So just wanted to say, um, one to four, you know, I think that's a great idea, and, um. Well, seeing what a community member, someone who's directly impacted, so I'm happy to see if we can, you know, to identify somebody, um, join us. In those conversations, and then another thing I wanted to say to Kwame Lee, huh?
Eli, you're on there, yes, me?
Yeah, just, just the, just, just one of, you know, in terms of thinking about ways, so we do talk about ways to support young people. And lots of ways, and one, one other way we do is that we have, uh, many grants. We have, we have, uh, many grants that we also, um, do put forward to different youth serving organizations, and so. Those also might be good resources, um, uh, this past year, it went to the Ipsy Carl Association, um. Uh, our community reads and elevation. So just to name some resources and some places, and that's one way that the city has shown support, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Alright, thank you all, is there anyone else who wants to do a response? Okay, um, what I'll say anymore, I adjourned the meeting, and my remarks from the mayor, which is simply what happens before adjournment. Is that I want to be very clear, I appreciate everyone giving feedback, everyone coming in to speak to us, um, any statements that I've made, I stand firm in mind. And I want to be very clear about that and transparent about that with you all, um, and as new information comes, then there'll be new discussions, but I stand firm behind every movement I say. So, thank you all so much for being here, um.